We are all wearing masks and everyone had their temperature checked on the way into the building. I'm also so pleased that our meeting is being livestreamed and that we will continue to livestream all board meetings going forward, whether in person or virtual. As well, videos of the meetings are made available a few days after the meeting, which is a really nice improvement that we've been trying to work towards for some time. Tonight, we have about half of our chairs full, so there actually is room for those of you at home who would like to come down to the Albany School of Humanities and join us in person to do that. We have had a full house a couple of times. I do appreciate that people are taking advantage of the opportunity to listen from home because we do have a maximum number of people who can sit and be in this room with us. So we do appreciate it when you take that opportunity to be from home, although we always welcome you to come here as long as there is room. Another silver lining is that we are taking public comments by email and actually by web form now, up to four minutes and 400 words or three minutes, and so we will have some public comment tonight. Any members of the public joining from home, we will show the relevant slides and documents in the virtual meeting screen, and we also offer you a chance to control the slides yourself if you go to albanyschools.org/boe. Albanyschools.org/boe is also where you will find instructions on how to connect to our meetings if you need to share those with anyone else. With that introduction, we invite those of you who choose to stand with us as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America, the republic that stands one nation without division, liberty and justice for all.
In addition to the Pledge of Allegiance, we always start our meeting by restating the mission of the City School District of Albany, which is to work in partnership with our diverse community to engage every learner in a robust educational program designed to provide the knowledge and skills necessary for success. As everyone knows, we are facing some very difficult challenges as a district right now that have been further complicated by things we are reading in the newspaper, and I am going to turn the microphone over to Superintendent Adams for her report.
Thank you very much, President Savage, members of the board. This is an incredibly difficult time for all of us, our school district, our community, our state, our nation, and for our world. The decisions that our school district and school district like ours are being forced to make due to the economic fallout of COVID-19 are the most painful that I have been associated with in my more than 30 years in education. As they are even more painful still, knowing that they will have more severe and lasting impacts on our community than they will on many other of the communities around us. As we have said before, none of the decisions that we are discussing tonight will be on the table if it were not for the devastating budget reductions we are facing due to the worldwide pandemic. However, these are the wrenching decisions we are faced with at this time. And at this time, we have far more questions than we have answers as we try to plan for the best for all of our students in the 2021 school year. Please be assured that we will continue to fight for the state and federal support that our district, our community, and most especially our students need and deserve. We understand that people are upset and angry about the status of our state funding. Certainly, I would not have wanted our district to face these challenges that we are facing at this time or any other. Everyone is anxious and hanging on by threads. Our organization has been turned upside down over the past several months. We have been addressing the unknown and unfamiliar while trying to create a sense of normalcy for our students, our families, and our employees. We have seen many challenges that are further impacted by the state budget uncertainty regarding the equitable funding of our schools. It is this uncertainty that challenges us to be the best for our students. It is this uncertainty that challenges us to understand that our entire organization will be impacted by these decisions for years to come. The City School District of Albany is preparing to meet all of these challenges that lie ahead for all of us in this most uncertain school year. We remain committed to being all in for Albany, and while that looks very different for us right now, we are still hanging on to that commitment in doing the best that we can for our students, working together, now more than ever that means for all of our students here in this district. We have made the decision to move forward and move ahead with our fall sports season beginning on Monday. Our student athletes at the high school level will have the opportunity to participate in the following sports, which the state has identified as low impact: boys and girls cross-country, boys and girls soccer, girls swimming, and girls tennis. Albany High School student athletes can sign up for these sports through our new online registration process. Please visit albanyschools.org for more information, including practice schedules for the first day on Monday. In-person registration at Albany High will also be available Friday and Saturday. More information will be available on our website. Please note that when games begin, we will be competing against our suburban council opponents, and no spectators will be allowed due to the health and safety precautions related to COVID-19. For our student athletes in grades seven, eight, we are offering intermural athletic opportunities this fall. Please stay tuned as this is being developed at this time. In the traditional fall sports that the state has identified as high impact, we are currently planning to offer those opportunities beginning in March, provided we are permitted to do so. Fall Sports Season Two will include football, competitive cheerleading, and girls volleyball. We will have more information about this later in the school year as well. It is important to note that infection rates and the rate in which we experience positive cases of COVID-19 will also impact that decision, not just for us as a school, but also for the suburban council. We are looking forward to welcoming students in person for the first time next week as we move ahead with our phased approach to start the school year. At the elementary level, our fifth grade students will be in attendance Monday morning for an orientation on going to school in the COVID-19 environment. They will learn about our procedures for building entry, temperature screening, health and hygiene, social distancing, hallway guidelines, and much more. Different grade levels will follow throughout the week, and all elementary students who are signed up for in-person instruction will attend for a partial day next Friday. At the middle level, our sixth graders will have their first day of in-person attendance beginning Wednesday. These partial days will allow them to get acclimated to the new practices of attending school during a pandemic. Our self-contained special education students at all levels will have an opportunity to attend school in person next week for onsite orientation. After a day off in observance of Yom Kippur on Monday, September 28, we are looking forward to beginning a full day of instruction on Tuesday, September 29, for all of our students, whether they are attending school in person or virtually. I also wanted to include a reminder that there is no school for students tomorrow as we have a professional development day for our faculty and staff. This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Adams. I in particular appreciate your remarks about the difficulty of the decisions that we're facing as a district and the impact on our staff, on our students, on our city, on our neighbors. We all take our responsibility incredibly seriously on this front, and I know my board colleagues and I have a lot of difficult challenges that we wrestle with as we try and balance all of the needs of everyone in the district with our limited financial That said, this brings us now to the part of the agenda we call "Public Comment." I'm going to take my mask off because I feel like I'm hard to understand. The board always welcomes input from the community about the decisions we are making. Per our longstanding policy, we set aside up to 30 minutes of our meeting to hear from district residents, parents, students, and other members of our community. We often extend beyond that 30 minutes in order to ensure that we hear from everyone who wants to be heard. Per our new public comment policy, we also accept comments in writing, as well as by voicemail, and of course, in person. Comments that are not in person must be made at least six hours prior to the meeting. We have delayed in enforcing that over the last several weeks. The policy was adopted about six weeks ago, but we are enforcing that, as well as the 400-word limit tonight for the first solid time. We ask that if you would like to submit your comment in writing, you please find the "Addressing the Board" link on the albanyschools.org/boe page. That will be the most efficient and easiest way for you to submit comments in writing. It also will help you count your 400 words to make sure that you stay within that limit. If instead, you choose to send us an email, we ask that you specify your name, phone number, and explicitly state that you would like your comment shared in public comment. Because we don't accept anonymous comments and because there can be sensitivity to reading names into the record, we only read comments if we get a clear indication that the author wants their letter read, and we ask if that is not perfectly clear. And sometimes we don't hear back, and in that case, we don't read the letter because we don't want to read somebody's name without their permission. We will continue to have a limit of three minutes for spoken comment. For those of you who are here tonight, your limit is three minutes and 400 words if comments are sent in writing. We do invite you, if you've chosen to be here tonight, to stay for the balance of the meeting. We invite everyone to consider coming to our meetings on a regular basis or listening into the recording meetings. It's always helpful to us when teachers and staff and students and administrators and other community members are knowledgeable about the decisions we are facing and share their thoughts with us. If you're speaking tonight while you make your remarks, please keep in mind that by law, information about individual students and specific staff cannot be shared. Every student and every staff member deserves to know that concerns about them will not be aired in public. Board members who read written comments will also pass over or substitute words if individual names are mentioned. Also, we ask that you keep in mind that public comment is not the best place to first alert the district to a concern. We ask that you share concerns first with relevant staff, such as the teacher or principal. If you feel the concern is not addressed adequately, you may appeal to that person's supervisor up the chain of command, if necessary, to the superintendent. Decisions made by the superintendent may be appealed to the board. Finally, we ask that you note that the board's policy is not to respond during the public comment period. If you do need a response, please consider contacting us by email, phone, or postal mail. For those of you who are here to speak tonight, when I recognize you, I ask that you state your name and city of residence. You'll also note that there are three microphones. We will take them in sequence. That allows us to clean a microphone in between, but not unduly delay the meeting waiting for the mics to be cleaned. Also, I want to direct your attention to Ms. Wilson, who is our board secretary. She will be responsible for giving you a one-minute and a 10-second notice, and I will notify you if your time has expired. It is a good idea to look up occasionally from your prepared remarks, if you have prepared remarks, and try and make eye contact with Ms. Wilson and see if she is flashing you a numeric sign so that you will not be surprised at the end of your three minutes. So with that orientation, and I'm sorry it's gotten rather lengthy as things have gotten more complicated, we will try and get it to be more succinct over time. The first three speakers, I'm going to call you all to the front, and then we'll rotate that way. Ms. Franz, if you can take the microphone, Mr. Grove, and Ms. Brody. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Franz.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Laura Franz, and I'm the president of the Albany Public School Teachers Association. Last week, I addressed you full of sadness for all the people this district is losing. This week, I'm here out of desperation. I'm desperate because quite simply, we are not ready to welcome students back into our schools. We're not ready to welcome teachers back into our schools. I'm sure everyone has picked up on the term pivot as it applies to 2020. Let me tell you that we are all pivoting so fast that frankly, all we are is dizzy at this point and in danger of collapse. Changes are being made daily, hourly. We quite simply can't keep up, and believe me, we are trying. We know our leadership is trying. It just isn't working. We have a middle school that literally has exposed beams and missing drywall where teachers' materials were disposed of. Years of materials just gone. Don't worry, do the best you can, reinvent your practice by next week, okay? Leadership teams that are being restructured so that some people don't even realize who their supervisor is and who they should look to for guidance, and if they do, then the guidance changes. We don't have room for you to be a virtual teacher in the building, so pack up your classroom and take it home. Oh, wait, we were wrong. Bring your things back in, and we'll look to find you a room in a building, but most likely not with your colleagues or homeschool teachers, but we'll try to at least have someone you may know from your grade level there. We are trying to teach virtually in rooms without cameras or mics. Co-teachers are trying to co-teach together but can't be in the same room because they can't get the technology right. The layoffs continue to happen with these people being told, "Get in those classrooms and build relationships with your students," that by the way, won't be your students after next week when you no longer have a job here, and the teachers who actually will be teaching those students may not even know it yet. It's nothing short of chaos, but this is what still amazes me every day of my career in the Albany schools. Everyone I know is trying their hardest to make this work. Teachers are absolutely doing the best they can and are most devastated because they know it's still not good enough. I'm not laying blame with the district, the board, the governor, okay, maybe the governor, or anyone else for that matter. I don't have time for blame, but what I am asking is that we continue to work together to try to get this as right as possible and maybe even remember that we value each other and try to be kind to each other, recognizing that we all care very deeply about our work. I want to state for clarity that APSTA has long valued and continues to value the collaborative work with our district. We look forward to sitting down with our negotiation teams on Monday to continue to do that work. But like everyone else in our school community, we are overwhelmed and see no end in sight unless we can all collectively figure out how to slow our roll, take a breath, and move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Franz. Mr. Grove, just one second. Mr. Brody, if you'd like to take the other microphone. When you're ready, Mr. Grove.
Okay. I am Jim Grove, the Resolution Specialist for Albany Public School Teachers Association. As virtual and in-person instruction has begun this week amid a budget crisis and a global pandemic, emotions continue to run the gamut for our members. Our belief in our system's readiness to effectively and safely begin and sustain instruction over the course of this year is seriously in question. APSTA continues to forcefully advocate the district and board make thoughtful, circumspect, consistent, transparent choices moving forward. To rebuild our faith and provide clarity this system so desperately needs, decision-making moving forward must be made in collaboration with APSTA. Sadly, we are not even close to the most complicated and challenging moment this stark roster will present. There'll be positive cases, management of quarantine, sickness, leaving us searching for the answer to the question, "How can we maintain the continuity of instruction for students amidst this chaos if we're struggling to even begin?" Given myriad staffing changes, transfers, and rifts over the past two weeks, today ended for most middle and secondary teachers in brutal, tearful faculty meetings confirming what we have known for days, that we've sustained unthinkable losses of extraordinary staff members who brought incredible life and talent to our district. We may not recover from these losses in my career, and yet, despite every day being filled with moments where we have wept for our colleagues, wept from the stress of concern for our families, wept from simply overwhelming uncertainty, our teachers still perform with extraordinary grace and dignity. As we always have and always do, the staff and teachers have endured to make success in seemingly impossible circumstances. Teachers only hours or minutes after losing their position and finding they'll be out of a job have sat earnestly in Google meets, putting on a brave face while they worked to build relationship with students. Students may very likely be taught by someone else as soon as Monday. Our members have led professional development for colleagues and tried to build our capacity, all the while knowing they'll never see if those supports bear fruit because they will no longer be with the district. APSTA has never wavered in our forceful advocacy for making good, sound decisions the first time, rather than ever proceeding with something we know is irrevocably flawed. We can never assume, as we seem to do time and again in nearly 25 years in this district, that our teachers will just make it work and it'll be okay. We are resourceful and diligent and tireless, but we cannot live with that assumption, not now, not in this world, this moment. Our students and families everywhere need stability and consistency and place inordinate value on trusting their teachers in school. We need to trust in our system and resources to build that sacred trust with our children and families. We cannot compound mistakes by making any decision because we're fearful of optics or backlash. I implore this board and administration to exhaust every avenue in your effort to make every decision honestly, transparently, and collaboratively to ensure the health of our staff, rebuild our faith in the system, and most importantly, ensure the continuity of instruction for our students throughout this most challenging year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grove. Can Ms. Van Cott take the open mic, and Ms. Brody, when you're ready?
Thank you. Good evening. I didn't realize how nervous I'd be. I don't know how you do this so many Thursdays. My name is Allison Brody, and I've worked in the district in a variety of capacities: sixth-grade reading AIS teacher at Hackett Middle School, school improvement manager at Hackett Middle School, assistant principal at Myers Middle School, and currently soon-to-be former assistant principal of Pine Hills Elementary School. I'm also a resident of Albany and am passionate about serving my community. This past week, along with 221 other dedicated and hard-working staff members, I was told that unfortunately, due to budget implications, we are to be let go. To say I'm devastated would be an understatement, but I'm not here to talk about my personal situation. I'm here to talk about the impact this decision is going to have on our children and our community for years to come. Taking away these 222 individuals that have built and maintained relationships with our students and families through a global pandemic, as well as the social unrest and violence that has occurred in our city this summer, is a disastrous plan. News has recently come out from Governor Cuomo's Budget Division that there has been no 20% cut to school aid even as we've waited six months for the federal government to deliver the resources the state needs to offset a $62 billion four-year revenue loss. In fact, the state has paid nearly 100% of funds to school districts and will continue to make scheduled payments this month. I implore you to wait on making this decision. Wait for more information. This is a decision that cannot be undone, and I ask that more discussion take place about the impact of what this means. I am committed to our goals in this district: to increase student achievement, to enhance the quality of instruction, to empower our families, and to partner with our communities. And I feel that our actions need to match our words. I've been doing my part. I've been doing these things. Please respect our community enough to get the full picture before making this decision that will impact us for years to come. I appreciate your time and consideration, and I have to say that my time here in Albany has made me a better leader and a better person. My colleagues are top-notch, and I love the students and families that I'm privileged to serve. I am and always will be all in for Albany. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brody. Mr. Marr, you can take the microphone, and Mr. Brody, when you're ready.
Good evening to you. First, please note I am a resident in the city of Albany, and I am the spouse of Allison Brody, she said soon-to-be former assistant principal at Pine Hills Elementary School. With that said, I certainly understand that the last few weeks and months have presented unprecedented challenges on an operational and financial front for the Albany City School District, and I'm sure that these problems have weighed heavily on each of you, being in such an unenviable position of having to make these difficult decisions required to address nothing less than a budget crisis. I have never worked in the school system. I don't pretend to be an expert on managing a school district's operations, nor do I view myself as a budget expert. However, I have learned a lot over the past few months, and I do read the news, and I do watch television, excuse me, and I do watch television, and I've watched your board meetings very nervously over the past few months with my wife on the couch, knowing what was probably going to happen, given the obvious. Prior to yesterday, my wife and I were somewhat resigned to the fact that the proposed staff reductions would ultimately take place, her last day being 25th, sorry if that's top secret, and with no real basis to expect any change in circumstances, given the ongoing battle of egos between our president and our governor. Thank you, gentlemen. Please know that, given a $23 million budget shortfall, I realize that the elimination of positions was likely unavoidable. However, based on the presentation given by Superintendent Adams on September 8, it's my understanding that the majority of the budget deficit, in particular, no less than $16.5 million of the $23 million total, was based upon New York's decision to withhold 20% of the state aid which Albany City School District expected and planned for prior to the pandemic. Then, for a moment yesterday, it seemed as though the district, its students and staff, were provided with a lifeline, given the lawsuit filed by New York State United Teachers and Governor Cuomo's, excuse me, the statements by Budget Director thereafter. In particular, Budget Director specifically stated the following: "We all need to work together to fight for the federal assistance we deserve. If the federal government forces us to reduce spending, we'll protect high-need districts from the impact as much as possible." While I realize that this statement cannot be viewed as any kind of guarantee, especially given the political climate we all live in, I was shocked here a few moments ago, here a few moments earlier today, I should say, that the Albany City School District Board of Education planned to simply proceed with the staff reductions at tonight's meeting. I realize that the issue may not work itself out quickly or at all. However, I implore you to have the patience and fortitude to at least delay tonight's vote for a few weeks to see what may change in terms of the state aid, which may not ultimately be withheld. I understand that the stakes are high for the district and that your decisions were not arrived at overnight, well, maybe in this case, given the news. However, assuming for a second that the funding is not withheld and that this development is made known within the coming weeks, I would be willing to bet that the impact of two to three weeks' savings via staff reductions will be...
Mr. Brody, if you can find an end of a sentence or an end of a paragraph. You have three minutes.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're losing an All-Star.
Ms. Van Cott.
Hi, I'm Stacy Van Cott. I'm a teacher at TCC-E. Laura is no longer here, but I just have to, she just said so much that I don't have to say now, and I want to thank her because being overwhelmed and exhausted is an understatement. This week, I was thinking I was moving into three different locations. I just found out today at 3:00, we just found out today where we were going, and we found out today that we lost our leadership. So I think I'm all cried out at this point, so I don't know, I'm going to try to keep it together, but there's a few things that I just have to, I have to talk about, and that's that I know budget cuts are out of our control. I know that if the money isn't there, the money's not there. But there are some things that are still, that we can still control. And I feel like, from the TCC-E perspective, we lost our location. We were told to pack like we're not coming back. We also lost most of our staff. I mean, I don't think I need to remind everybody how vital the TCC-E is to the most vulnerable group of kids in our district, because I think that was discussed in length at our last board meeting, but when I say we were told that our program was going to be restructured, it feels like it's being completely dismantled. On my high school floor alone, I'm just talking teachers, not even monitors, there were seven teachers, six of them are gone, six. So when, it's like pouring salt in the wound when we found out today that things that are under our control, things, decisions that could have been made, weren't. We lost both of our leaders. We were slated to have an assistant principal. It was in the redesign plan. I thought that it was, okay, we have, at least we have our assistant principal with us. We found out today that both of our leaders are going to a new school. I think that literally was the straw that broke the camel's back, because our meeting was filled with nothing but tears. I saw colleagues and staff members that just felt completely defeated. I saw colleagues and staff members that just felt completely defeated. I kind of went off the cuff here, so I'm just trying to find my location. I just don't, I just want to know what possibly could be the reason for this. Stability and consistency is so important for our students. We lost our location. We don't even know if our Tony Clements closet is coming with us. We don't know if our food pantry is coming with us. We don't know if our school store is coming with us. And all of these things were built up by our program, and we don't even have boxes to fit the stuff to put them in. And I hear, like, I hear that my time is up, but I just want to say, please, there are some things we can control. Our kids lost their location. They lost so many of their teachers. Why do we, we have none of our monitors coming with us. We don't have our leadership coming with us. Our AP was slated. I thought she was coming with us. Please, if there's anything you can do to help restore and make us feel like we're still the TCC-E, please consider it, because we are definitely hurting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Cott. Mr. Marr, when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Isaiah Marr. I'm a student of TCC-E. This is one of my first times doing this sort of thing, but I want my voice to be heard for the, for the School of TCC-E, because TCC is a safe home for our students, and our teachers are very caring and understanding. TCC takes, takes the kids that are, that get kicked out of their schools or the outcasts of other schools, and takes them in and helps them get through, like, all, like, their problems and stuff, and helps them get better grades, and helps them show them that there is, like, a place that you can be comfortable and sit there and be able to focus on, like, the stuff you need to do, because we're all a family. And we love all of our teachers, and our assistant principal is one of the kindest people there. And she helped me personally get through a lot of personal issues and helped me focus on the stuff that I need to do in school so that I can get better and do focus, like, focus on the stuff that I need to do so that I can graduate school. Especially through middle school, she was one of the people that really helped out a lot. And all of our teachers being, like, removed from our school is very heartbreaking for us, and we really love our, our staff and all the teachers because they're kind and caring, and they really help out a lot. That's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of the in-person comment period. We're now going to go to the written comment period, and so we will begin with Mr. Omenyawi at the end. And I believe you have a few letters for us, Mr. Omenyawi.
My first, my first letter comes from Maggie Burns. My name is Maggie Burns, and I work at Delaware Community School. I've had the privilege of working in the Albany District for the past, I'm sorry, this is cut off. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to look at this on the email because it's cut off on this paper.
Okay, that's not a good sign. Everyone, can you just please check the, we are using a new method for, anybody else have cutoff issues? It's just that one? Is it just that one, Mr. Omenyawi?
Minor set.
But you can make it happen. Okay. So, Mr. Omenyawi, why don't you do the ones you can, and then do me a favor and send me a quick email or text with the name, and I will forward you the email in its entirety.
Okay, so the next letter I will be reading states, "Good morning, Superintendent Adams and members of the school board. I'm writing because I heard that a casualty of the school budget cut is social workers and behavioral health counselors, particularly my daughter's counselor at Albany High School." And it says the name. "My daughter, Rose Burke, is a senior at Albany High School and has worked with this teacher for the past two years. Rose comes from a home where she endured abuse and neglect and was an observer of domestic violence, neighborhood violence, and substance abuse before she entered the foster care system at age 12 and came to live with me. At 17, she struggles with fallout from trauma and adverse childhood experiences. She was hospitalized just last fall and again this spring, and has issues with trust, attachment, and impulsivity. It is not an exaggeration to say that the teacher has helped save Rose's life. This child, who has such a hard time forming any sustaining, healthy relationships, feels safe with her. While school remains challenging, Rose has persevered and is now talking about attending community college. And not only has the teacher served as Rose's person at Albany High School, but she has gone above and beyond to support me, especially when Rose was hospitalized. She has talked things through with me, made referrals, provided testimonials, and offered advice. I am lucky to have her. We cannot lose her as we enter home, as we enter the homestretch and head towards, hopefully, graduation. My day job is working with the government to support programs and providers that strengthen families and prevent abuse. I understand that the state's 20% across-the-board cuts to education have forced districts like ours to make very hard decisions. I also know that during this time of isolation and stress, the last thing we should be doing is cutting social workers and counselors. While CPS reports have decreased, and only because children are no longer seeing mandated reporters in person on a daily basis, reports of domestic violence and child sexual abuse have increased. Every day, the local news is full of reports of gun violence. Our family aside, children and teens, especially black and brown kids in lower-income, higher-risk neighborhoods, need mental health and behavioral supports now more than ever. Those things we call protective factors, a nurturing adult, counseling services, cannot go by the wayside, or we will find ourselves in a worse place post-pandemic than we are in now. I implore you to find another alternative. Families cannot lose their support system. Children and teens need people like the teacher in their lives, even remotely, especially during remote learning, to keep them safe and healthy. Jen O'Connor, Director of Policy and Advocacy with the New York State Home Visiting Coordination Initiative." And the next letter I have comes from Jen O'Connor's daughter. Rose wanted to add her thoughts. "This teacher is a very caring person. She cares deeply for all her students, and I am one of those students. And it makes me very sad that because of budget cuts, they are taking the one person away from me that I feel can support me the best way she can. She tries her hardest to make all her students feel confident in going to school." The next letter starts off saying, "Greetings, Albany School Board members. First, thank you very much for all your preparation you have been doing to provide staff and students a successful school year in spite of unprecedented circumstances. Thanks also to the building administrators and staff who are persisting in this very tough time. We appreciate all your work. I want to tell you a couple of stories that illustrate the consequences of staffing cuts in our district. There's a simple but important problem in the Arbor Hill Kindergarteners' bathroom. They cannot reach the soap to wash their hands, a problem anytime, but especially during COVID. The reduction in staff means that even a simple fix, lowering the soap dispensers, is more than what we can handle by stretched staff. They have too much they are required to do, and with fewer people available to help. My daughter, a TA at that school, just ordered and personally paid for soap dispensers the kids can reach. I know teachers often generously pay for education supplies, but a TA should not have to take on this responsibility so students can be protected. In addition, my husband and I are providing storage space for teacher supplies in our own home. There is not appropriate staffing to manage space for teachers to use or even store the supplies they have personally purchased to make their classrooms inviting and their lessons most effective. As you juggle to manage the bigger picture of funding and staffing, I hope these two small stories convey the impact of staffing decisions on students and staff. The challenges are great at all levels. May wisdom guide your work. Peace. Jan Roel, Van Buren, Street, Albany." My next letter starts, "Dear Superintendent Adams and Board, I'm writing to express my profound hope that it might be possible to retain the teacher as the in-person fourth-grade teacher for the dual-language program this year. I know that the cuts in the district are gutting so many important programs, but this teacher is such a key part of the dual-language program in the school community. He has a special role as the only male teacher in the dual-language program. I've seen from my own son's experience how important having a male role model in the program was. His interest in learning and learning Spanish in particular was greatly improved when this teacher joined the school. As a certified bilingual teacher, he has unique talents which are essential to the success of the dual-language program. Maintaining Spanish instruction in our dual-language classes is crucial for the program's ability to continue, and from my understanding, there are 19 in-person students at the fourth-grade level, many of whom are actually from Spanish-speaking families who rely on sharing a language with their child's teacher to be able to communicate with school and support their children's education. This is not possible with an English-dominated teacher and Spanish-speaking aide. In addition, while teachers' aides are vital to our school communities, they are not certified teachers and do not have special training, as are dual-language teachers do, in integrating Spanish and English across the curriculum, and will not be available for parent interactions. We understand that the SSL and the Spanish AIS services cannot continue in the current funding environment, but I hope that we will not lose this teacher, who is so vital to the program, along with a whole-grade level of students who will not have Spanish instruction in the classroom. Thank you for the, thank you for taking the time to read this email and consider this decision. For the sake of our kids, I hope you will be able to retain this teacher as the fourth-grade teacher for this class. Sincerely, Marie Shapsis, parent of Philip, dual-language now in eighth grade, and Alice, third grade, dual-language." The last letter I have right now states, "Good morning. My name is Denisee Cackrey, and I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that incorrectly. And I am a resident in Albany, New York. You have permission to read this public for public comment. I truly understand there is financial hardship and issues beyond your control. As a parent of a child with a disability in Albany, I wanted you to know these are extremely uncertain times, even more so for us as parents. Our children are fortunate to be protected by the law. After the last board meeting and hearing about how special education was protected due to mandates, I felt a little better. However, I recently learned from another parent that our assistant director of special education was one of the cuts. I am so shocked. Each time I have called the special ed office..." This teacher, this, this person returns my calls and has been extremely helpful in supporting me as a parent, and she is able to quickly gather meetings upon request with our educational team. She has taught me how to advocate for my child and makes sure my voice as a parent is heard. She knows my child, she knows the educational team, and it is clear she is trusted and valued by the, by the manner in which she runs a meeting to ensure everyone has a chance to speak and participate. Cuts are deep for, cuts are deep for our community. I feel supported knowing you as a board listen to parents. I also wanted to say that I hope when school leadership is thinking about cuts, they are thinking about who and what position means, who and what that position means to our community. I hope they understand that choosing particular members will have a negative impact on the community at large. Special education children across the district will be coming to school in person, and we need all of those who care about our children to continue to guide the teachers and aides working with special-needs children. I am worried about this loss in particular during these times. I'm asking you as a board to think like mothers and fathers and look at who in question is this what is best. Cutting in special ed. Thank you for hearing my voice. Denisee Cackrey." Did you send me an email?
I did, but Ms. Mann, do you want to continue, and then Mr. Omenyawi can come up with the missing one?
Okay. The first letter is from-
Oh, I can, I can do it if you'd like. I got it. I'm sorry. I'll just finish, if that's okay with you, Dennis. My last comment is, begins, "My name is Maggie Burns, and I work at Delaware Community School. I've had the privilege of working in the Albany District for the past 25 years, serving our students and families. I am awed each day by our students, what they teach me, and bring into my awareness. I am grateful for the positive impact the district has had on my evolution as a teacher and a person. I'm writing to express my concern over the devastating impact the budget cuts are having on our reopening this school year. It has created an inordinate amount of confusion, anxiety, and frustration for, for most, if not all, AFTA and ABSU members. Members of both of these bargaining units have not been given classroom assignments, virtual or otherwise, in enough time to prepare for the school year. It has been explained to us that this is due to reorganization needed after the major cuts. If teachers were assigned, they are told to remain fluid as nothing is permanent. In regards to the actual budget cuts, there is no transparency. The employees and the general public are not aware of how many positions in various tenure areas and bargaining units have actually been cut. If my understanding is correct, each bargaining unit should have experienced a cut of 20% of membership. I have seen the slides that capture the numbers for each unit, but what I have not seen and has not been shared is what that actually looks like in terms of impact to each school building and the district in general. What actual positions have been eliminated? Stakeholders all deserve to understand the devastating impact. AFTA and ABSU are bearing the brunt of these cuts. We are losing valuable people integral to our school communities, and more importantly, integral to the support of the students we serve. These budget cuts are draining our workforce and traumatizing our staff. We are expected to maintain expectations with less and less. Why is it the district will not meet with either union about these and the many other issues that arise each day related to our reopening plan and our budget cuts? We all know school will look different this year. Our teachers, staff, and families deserve transparency so we can all work collaborative, collaboratively to start the year in the most supportive way possible for all stakeholders. Thank you."
Okay, so the first letter I have is from constituent Michael Woodhead, "To the Albany Board of Education, I would like this read into the record at the next board meeting. After what feels like several comments from the district admin and promises that the cameras would not be required to be on all the time, and there would be leeway and discretion in this due to the number of privacy and mental health concerns, I feel like we as parents have been lied to, misled, or the district has a severe communication problem with itself. During the orientation sessions for the high school and for the individual academies, it was made clear multiple times that they expect the students to be on camera for the entire duration of classes, even when they are just sitting there and listening. This is counter to what was communicated multiple times during board meetings. I cannot express my complete and total frustration at all of this. Does the district admin even talk to the schools? Or did they just say what they think people want to hear and then do whatever they want anyway? Aside from all of the privacy concerns and the issues with the child's mental well-being, with, with a child's mental well-being of being on camera all the time, and that is not the same as being in a classroom, I don't care what some in the district admin keeps saying, it is not an effective way to gauge who is and who is not listening, and who is and who is not engaging. It disturbs and saddens me that the district has dumped money into black holes like Lexia, Dreambox, and Naviance, things that bring absolutely nothing- things that bring absolutely nothing to the table in terms of educating our kids, which is what this is all about, but during this entire process has not spent even a single thought into looking at virtual instruction methods and best practices. I know that because you won't find anyone that has done or is familiar with virtual instruction that advocates for what is being done and pushed. When you add into the total miscommunication a reopening website that didn't have anything that came close to all of the information and answers, the lack of concrete plans, even after the school year has started, and the frustration and anger that is starting to come from parents is all a result, not of the bad situation we find ourselves in and the challenges that come along with it, but how poorly the district admin has handled it and communicated to the families. Sincerely, Michael Woodhead." All right. "Members of the school board, over the past days, there has been some new information shared publicly regarding the distribution and withholding of state aid from school districts. It appears from this information that the situation is more complex than previously described by the superintendent. Additionally, we've been made aware of a pending lawsuit by NISA against the state government regarding the state aid withholding. In light of these circumstances, it seems extremely premature to go through with the devastating layoffs agreed upon at the previous board meeting. I know that the situation is complicated by rules, regulations, and bureaucracy. However, I have also seen even large government agencies respond in imbly to the COVID-19 pandemic in a way that defies the normal bureaucratic process. Therefore, if it is within your power to delay these layoffs at this time and wait and see the outcome of the current state-level discussions, I believe that you have a moral obligation to do so. If you believe that you do not have that power, then we, as the school community you represent, deserve a radically transparent explanation of the situation tonight at this meeting. Sincerely, Claire Prophet." I think I pronounced that correctly. Okay. All right. Okay, here's the next letter. "As a 16-year-old veteran teacher in Albany, my colleagues and I share the frustrations of the constant unknown and the continuous change in direction. The students, staff, and families need definitive answers and a set plan with expected protocols. The closer we get to in-person instruction, the more things change. We need stability to ensure the safety of students, faculty, and staff. The safety of all is in jeopardy. Sincerely, a very... Sincerely, a frustrated and worried educator, Okay, so the next two... I have two left. They're lengthy, so here we go. All right. "Dear Albany School District Board Members, for public comment and make no apologies for being a Karen." Okay. "While it may offend others, this is the first time I am writing, and only our opinion, but could not stay quiet. I speak on behalf of many mothers who are not experts in the many video chat programs the district uses, but listened in disappointment to last week's board meeting. Excuse my pessimism, but I strongly believe there will be another wave or uptick since many adults and college students still have not gotten it that coronavirus, aka COVID-19, is deadly and will not take any prisoners if social, physical distancing, proper sanitizing, and wearing facial coverings are not taken seriously. With schools finally reopening after a long break due to the pandemic, we are all scared during these uncertain times and do not know what to expect in the coming months. May God help us and his children. The Albany School District is not alone in facing cuts in education and do not agree that schools should reopen now by having only 7 through 12 students learn virtually, which will not help but hinder them while pre-K to 6th grade and special needs students are in-school person learning for now or to be determined. Students want and need to go to school, to be with their peers so they can feel some normalcy. Many parents want the same thing as well, and would love for their child to... And would love for their child to get the hell out of the house and do something constructive rather than eat them out of house at home, but cannot because of this pandemic and the lack of a confident school plan. The Albany School District has many talented and well-skilled employees, and it is disheartening to hear that several hundred employees will be laid off or asked not to return this school year due to reduction in the state aid. Great leadership starts from the top. Since the city is facing a $17 million financial shortfall, Albany Mayor Kathy Sheehan announced in the spring that she may forego her mayoral salary to save some jobs." The writer mentions a particular administrator will receive an annual salary of over $200,000, which 2% more than her original salary before her contract was extended. And most of the other school administrators make over $100,000. I have known this particular administrator and her administrators are... I don't feel comfortable reading... Well, let me see. Okay. I'm just gonna... Okay. So...
Did you have a question, Board Member Mann? If it's an individual name, you just want to pass over?
Okay, so I'm just gonna read it. So I know the particular administrator and other administrators are ballers and use living a lavish lifestyle. And we are not asking them to take a cut so they can collect cans and apply for SNAP in order to supplement, but they too can be great leaders and set an example if each administrator was to immediately and temporarily reduce their salaries in order to save vital positions that are nonessential. If all of you are truly all-in for Albany, you would see it in your hearts to come up with a better and effective plan for our children's sake. Sincerely, Amelia Torres, concerned parent of Albany High School student. Okay. This is the last letter. All right. "Good evening to board members, staff, and families. We understand the challenge that the current inequitable budget constraints presents to the Albany District in particular. However, with the impossibility of a more comprehensive understanding of the total budget shortfalls this year, we hope the district will err on the side of fewer, less disruptive cuts, knowing that more may be necessary later as opposed to the currently proposed preemptive deprival of so many critical services. It is devastating watching the closure of the Tony Clement Center and the Albany International Center and the related discontinuation of so many vital programs for our community. We have two daughters in the Albany City School District, one of whom is in a 913 special education class. Understanding that there are no easy choices, we are deeply concerned regarding the layoffs of staff members who work with the special education population. Specifically, we lament the loss of a particular administrator with whom we've built a strong trust, something that doesn't come easily when you have a child who is both medically fragile and who has different abilities that present a myriad of challenges. Many students in this population, our daughter included, have difficulty verbally communicating what happens at school. And so it's imperative that there is a mutually respectful and trusting relationship between teachers, staff, administrators, and the parents of children for accurate communication to ensure the safety and dignity of the entire student body. The work of the aforementioned administrator has been crucial to both the well-being of our daughter throughout a particularly challenging school year for her and to our trust that her best interests dictate educational decisions. Additionally, a particular hall monitor has gone above and beyond to make sure that our daughter is safe and loved is another of the many support staff who have lost their jobs. Those who support our special education students directly construct the experience our children have at school, which shape their expectations for all future interactions with a world that can be either neglectful or they can be considerate, respectful, and attentive. We choose the latter and hope that the Albany City School District would consider the vulnerability of the populations whose services are targeted for reductions and eliminations. Sincerely, Nathan Bagardis and Noel Gentile, residents of the City of Albany and parent of two Albany City school students."
So this first letter comes from Tilia Harold. "Hello. I've been a parent in the district for 17 years and currently have elementary and middle school students in our schools. I honestly have a number of concerns about how this school year has begun. With the interest of respecting everyone's time and a goal to be productive, I will focus on what's the most concerned for me today. There has been some reported virtual classes will be recorded. There has been inconsistent messaging about this, i.e., has it started yet? How often? Why? To my knowledge, nothing official has been sent out from the district regarding this. Nor have I, as a parent, received anything requesting my consent. If this practice has been implemented, it is unacceptable, and it's without parent guardian knowledge and consent, and that students and parents are hearing about it secondhand and seemingly on the fly. Recording class sessions brings up issues like privacy, students' experience stigma, and the ethics of using it to monitor students' and teachers' performance. It raises questions like where and how long will the recordings be stored? Who is watching them? How often? And what purpose? We already have enough issues to navigate with virtual schooling. It's honestly overwhelming to add yet one more. While I don't question there might be valid reasons to record the classes, i.e. allowing absent students to watch it at a later time, it should not be occurring without clear information being relayed to families and consent being addressed first. I'm asking that the district provide solid clarification of this issue. And if it is a practice that will be implemented, that the policies and procedures need to be communicated to families and consent addressed before anything else moves forward. Thank you, Tilia Harold." The next letter is from Tamara Armstrong. "Good evening. I'm a senior teacher and one of many that were all-in for Albany way before it was a cool morrow. Having seen 30 years of this district, I'm in amazement of how easily it was to crush it all to bits. We have come so far. We were finally there where we should have been 30 years ago. I am more than saddened. I'm mad. I'm mad for so many things, but I need to keep this short, so... In the past, there were no SEL services, none. So when a student in kindergarten came and asked if I could help her because her mommy was being pushed into a fridge by her daddy, this was the response I got from the nurse and the principal in those early '90s. Well, you have to get used to that. It's just the way it is there. In the past, when a student couldn't learn at the rate of a typical grade-level student, it would be said, oh, that's how it is. You'll have to get used to it. The blame game of those parents, those this and that, all ignorant and racially motivated blames. How easily this will return as we give up the best things the district has spent their money on? The SEL staff, the specialized coaches, the backbone of the support staff? Come on. We've had a glut of administrator supervisors and assistants to supervisors and their assistants and those supervisors who have their titles changed year after year. For what? Not to be with kids? People that work directly with kids are what our district needs. Why not keep all that are needed to be all-in for Albany? Tell the state, no, can't do the 20% cuts and refuse to do them because we are all-in for Albany. Don't say that motto again until you, Board of Education and Superintendent, say, no, all-in for Albany, and mean it. What a way to protest the equity of our Black and Brown community. Just say, no. It cannot happen on my watch because our kids deserve their education. We are not a district who boos about, oh, I can't play baseball and soccer or field hockey this year. Start thinking outside the box, and let's make some good trouble. All-in for Albany. Tamara Armstrong." The next letter from Stephanie Stewart. "Members of the Board, the new demands with little direction or communication have been the most distressing. This past week, I was directed to come and get the classroom ready for in-person instruction. What did I need to do? I did not know. In spite of not knowing, I first dug out my materials, many of which I purchased with my own money from the classroom that they were placed for storage. Then moved my personal belongings all by myself out of the classroom for the 30th in a row. Next, packed books, games, manipulatives, Next, packed books, games, manipulatives, everything I use for teaching, weigh in closets and drawers because they are not allowed to be out. Wait, yes, books are allowed. Oh, wait, no, they're not. Take everything off the walls. Oh, wait, you can have laminated stuff. Oh, wait, no, it needs to come down. All while teaching virtually, connecting families and planning lessons. There are thirteen, thirteen children and two adults scheduled to be in there. I have a smartboard, but it's not visible to all students. I ask you, how is that equitable? I was told I can't give them paper and there are no computers. And now a majority cannot see the smartboard. So I ask you, what should I be doing with them from eight in the morning until one forty-five in the afternoon? While the only thing they are allowed to do is sit at their desk with a mask on. Is that the education you want for your child? This has got to change. If this is what's happening to our students, we should not be opening. Classrooms and teachers are not ready to have students. I have students scheduled to come Monday and have been given no direction as to what I can and cannot do with them. We need clear, consistent guidelines and directions. Virtually, we are doing well. Give us more time. I urge you to put out clear, consistent guidelines to follow, to make sure students are learning in a safe space. Given the in-person teachers' time to follow these guidelines, stop the inconsistent messages and lack of communication. Albany needs to do better for its employees and families. I thank you for your time. Stephanie Stewart. This next letter comes from Melissa Hunt. As a parent of three children who went through the Albany Public School District from Montessori to Myers to Albany High School, as an Albany taxpayer and as a teacher in the City School District of Albany, I want to know why the district is refusing to discuss the complete confusion surrounding our return to school. Parents, teachers and students are being affected daily by constant changes, transfers and layoffs. The inconsistencies between building and the complete lack of transparency over the cuts being made. Why isn't the board asking more questions? Why isn't the board fighting for our students and staff? Melissa Hunt. This last letter is from Ashley Henrich. I recently found out that my daughter's dual-language teacher is being let go from the district. As a parent who's an advocate of public education with qualified educators, this news is incredibly devastating. My daughter has been a part of the dual-language program at DCS since pre-kindergarten, and we chose this program due to, due to its high standards for the academic program and also the teacher professional academic qualifications, including a bilingual certification. My daughter has benefited greatly from the instruction received in the core curriculum, as well as the Spanish language instruction and the cultural learning and the diversity that's unique and enriching confident to the dual-language program. I understand that due to the challenges of providing both virtual and in-person instruction, and the principal of her school had to restructure the dual-language program, and that the reduction of some elementary positions in the district led to cuts of those with less seniority, which included my teacher's daughter. With the understanding that the proposed budget cuts may not be executed by New York State due to the lawsuit put forward by NICE, is it possible to postpone cutting positions such as these teachers unless there's more clarity about it? And if and when funds will be released? I understand that there are certain legalities surrounding which positions are cut first in a situation such as this. And my hope is that the recent pressures being put on state leaders to release funding for our schools will provide some resources to maintain positions such as the one held by my daughter's teacher. I know that a school district cannot spend funds they don't, they do not have. But I'm wondering if there's any ability to pass these decisions, even if for a couple of weeks, knowing the recent developments with the union lawsuit. If this teacher's position is cut, it will be to the great detriment of my daughter and her classmates. I understand that many parents share the same sentiment. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. I understand that the Albany City School District and the Board of Education are facing unprecedented challenges. And thank you for working hard to make the best choices possible for our students in the district. Thank you for your time and consideration.
The first comment I'm going to read is from Emily Cresorio. Hello, my name is Emily Cresorio. I am a first-grade teacher at Giffen Memorial Elementary School. I have been a teacher for over eight years now, and four of those years I have been at Giffen. Giffen is the most dedicated, passionate and caring school when it comes to educating our students. The students and staff make this school feel like home. But unfortunately, last Friday, I received devastating news that my job was terminated due to budget cuts. When I received this news, my heart felt like it was ripped out of my chest. You want to know why? Because teachers put their heart and soul into their teaching. And when you tell a teacher that they can't teach anymore, you steal their soul from doing their God-given gift. My students need me as much as I need them. I need to educate my students. I facilitate their learning. I engage their minds. I listen to their questions. I support their struggles. I help with shaping their dreams. I learn every day. I teach. Teaching isn't my job. It's my passion, and I know for a fact other teachers who lost their jobs feel the same way. Please, fund our schools and allow us to come back and do what we do best. Public schools are the heart and soul of our communities. Public education is something that we all share. So why take away the most important piece to the puzzle? Please, give our district the funding we deserve. Please do it for our children. They need us and we need them. We are united and we will not give up on our children. Hashtag fund our schools, hashtag fund our future. Love, Ms. Cresorio. The second email is from Emma Jenkins. My name is Emma Jenkins. Why my job is important? I am a food service worker, part-time, serving lunch to the students at Eagle Point. I work together with a full-time food service worker. We work hard to ensure each student receives a proper lunch in a timely manner. To do this, we have to keep an accurate count of hot and cold meals needed on a daily basis, prepare sandwiches needed for the day, keep track of any food allergy the students may have to make sure students do not come in contact with food they are allergic to. If we were not there, some students would not have the much-needed breakfast and lunch they need to properly function in class. I would like to have my email read at the meeting. Thank you, Emma Jenkins, Eagle Point Elementary School. The next message is from Emily Manjack. Dear Albany Board members, the proposed cuts, budget cuts, will still leave a fifteen million dollar deficit. If these cuts go through, the district will be operating in a financial deficit as well as a personnel deficit. In a time of a pandemic, is it wise to cut nurses and cleaning staff? Currently, most classrooms are set up to have a supporting teacher. Many TAs will be stepping into these roles. This will not be difficult for them to do, seeing as they work closely together with classroom teachers or even independently during the school year. They will be critical as another social, emotional support for the returning students who will all be traumatized. In virtual classrooms, they will be assisting with RTI support as well. The one hundred and twenty-six positions posed to be eliminated through ABSSU reductions also target many people of color whose salaries often do not reflect their contributions to students academically and socially emotionally. What message are you sending when you take and take from those at the bottom and take from direct student supports? You are sending the message to the city and its families that you cannot offer the what you have promised in equitable education. Thank you for your time, Emily Manjack. The next email is for Betsy Tannenhaus. Good evening. My name is Betsy Tannenhaus, and this is my thirtieth year teaching for the Albany City School District. I am writing this out of my concern. Over the past several months, we have talked and acknowledged what a challenge returning to school would be for our students. We all agree it is vital to provide a positive, safe and stable environment for them upon their return. I am deeply worried that this is not going to occur. There is a troubling disconnect in our district's communication. Staff and faculty find out information on social media instead of from district communication. Teachers discover their assignments, i.e. virtual or in-person, through rumors. Information on instructional hours listed on the district website for parents does not align with information sent to teachers by administration. Instructions started last week, and there are still teachers who do not know what they are teaching or where they are teaching from. This week, teachers are packing up rooms and moving to new spaces while also providing virtual instruction and trying to build those crucial relationships with their students and families. Newly-formed workspaces that need to be formed due to COVID are not ready. Maintenance staff is trying to simultaneously help move teachers and set up these new spaces with furniture. The buildings are quite truthfully in disarray. We start in-person instruction Monday. Parents are asking about schedules, encore teachers, recess. I can only answer truthfully and say, I don't know. There is a systematic breakdown of decision-making and clear communication on the part of the district. The situation is unacceptable. It is unacceptable for the district's many employees, and it is certainly unacceptable to the children and families we serve. If we are truly all in for Albany, then we do better for our students and their families. Thank you, Betsy Tannenhaus. The next message is from Jaclyn Hout. Dear members of the board, my name is Jaclyn Hout. I have been teaching in Albany for fifteen years at the elementary level, and I have never seen such devastating cuts to APSTA and ABSSU. These cuts have created additional stress and anxiety for myself and many of my colleagues. In addition to the stress we already felt from reopening with so many unanswered questions, concerns, lack of clear guidance and preparation time. The school year has begun, and staff still do not know what their assignments are for this year. Albany has cut social workers and behavioral specialists at a time when our students need them the most. This has been the first week that teachers were able to access their school buildings to prepare their classrooms. Many arrived to find their personal belongings moved out of the classroom and spent valuable preparation time tracking them down. Instead of setting up a classroom and getting materials ready for learning, many spent hours, and at times days, packing and unpacking their classrooms due to room and building changes. I feel like we are being set up for failure, and it makes staff look bad when we are calling parents to tell them there has been yet another change to the plan. It makes staff look unprepared when classrooms are not ready to welcome students because of late assignment changes. It makes staff sound unknowledgeable when we can't answer questions about simple things like, who is my child's teacher? Can students bring backpacks? When will my child get a Chromebook? How will attendance be tracked? What happens after November fourteenth? When does school officially start? And will print materials be available? And if so, can we pick them up from a virtual student? It feels like we are building the plane while in the air. I really want to go back to school and see my students, but not with so many questions still unanswered. Please help our staff and children feel safe and prepared as we begin phasing students in for in-person learning next week. We need answers that are clearly written down and are consistent across the district. Thank you for your time and attention. Frustrated and confused, Jaclyn Hout. I would like to share the public comment. The next message is from Lauren Clemens. I implore the board to postpone all personnel decisions to a later date. I understand that the proposed cuts were an unavoidable, if painful, response to the state budget crisis. However, in light of the pending lawsuit and Cuomo's subsequent reaction, voting on personnel reductions now is premature. Losing administrators, teachers and staff on this scale will fundamentally alter many of the programs and services the district currently offers. As a parent of a child enrolled in the dual-language program at DCS, I am deeply concerned about the very basic sustainability of the program. There is only one dual-language classroom program per grade, so losing dual-language program teachers would be catastrophic to the program. Dual-language program teachers and staff have a combination of life experience and specialized training that make them unique in the district and irreplaceable. It is not simply that they speak Spanish. They teach all the course subjects in Spanish and English. They communicate with parents and guardians in their native languages, be it English or Spanish, in culturally attentive ways. And they bridge to the larger community of Spanish-speaking families, which is in itself large and internally diverse. Without the dual-language program, the number of Albany families who are dedicated to their children's education but who face undue difficulty navigating the elementary educational system would rise considerably. Thanks.
My first email is from John Binder. As the father of two elementary students in the district and the husband of a district elementary teacher, I urge the board to address ongoing management issues as this is challenging school year, as this challenging school year begins. Adorn our community in the sense of utter despair and downright anger we all feel at the devastating reductions caused by the failures of our state and federal government. But while that is largely the result of broader systemic inequities, there are administrative issues that do not seem to be within the district's control. It is the latter category of problems I want to briefly summarize for the board today. First, the district's communications to parents have been confusing, inconsistent and often simply wrong. It can feel like a full-time job just to keep up with and interpret all the conflicting messages. We have patience and understanding for the challenge at hand, but this needs to improve. Second, while I know my wife and other teachers are more than willing to step up and to serve our kids now more than ever, even today, many of them do not have assignments, student rosters, or even any direction from leadership. In a time of limited resources, we are wasting our most valuable ones, our teachers. Third, the current virtual phase and schedule for those enrolled in person seems ill-conceived and unnecessarily complicated, in part because of the communication issues already mentioned, even knowing class times for our kids is a difficult task. It is challenging for working parents to manage and just as importantly, it exacerbating the difficulties for our students as they try to handle unprecedented transition to a strange new year. It does not seem to have a clear budgetary or other purpose, at least not one that's not, one, at least not one that's been clearly articulated. Finally, the lack of available Chromebooks for students that need them is simply inexcusable, especially when it seems to be a management shortcoming rather than a budgetary one. This only compounds the inequities the board stresses it wants to address, especially with multi-children families choosing the virtual option. These and other, and countless other issues seem to be largely a result of failures by the cabinet rather than the financial issues that are certainly even more impactful for the district. I urge the board to address at least what is written, with, sorry, I address the board to address at least what is within its direct control, mismanagement by the cabinet. Thank you. The second message is from Paula Binder. I'm writing to strongly urge the board to address the complete lack of clear, consistent communication from the district to teachers and parents. The constantly changing decisions from the administration have left parents and teachers feeling infuriated, confused, helpless and hopeless. Furthermore, these decisions show a lack of respect for the schedules of parents, teachers and students. The most recent example of this is the change in the pre-K and K schedule for next week. After creating a plan for childcare and working from home for next week based on the information given out previously, we're told that the district has once again changed its story and will no longer have pre-K and K students attending school two days a week. This new information is causing parents to scramble and rearrange their schedules yet again. While I understand that the budget concerns are valid and we live in a changing world, these excuses cannot be used to account for the whole crisis that our district is in at the moment. That lays the feet of the mismanagement from the cabinet and administration. Teachers, myself included, have been eager and ready to start implementing rigorous curriculum to our students. However, we have been given next-to-no guidance on how to proceed. Furthermore, on the rare occasions when we are given guidance, it is then changed the next day. Questions are often answered with, I don't know at that, at this point. We have been in school for over two weeks, and we, teachers and parents, demand clarity and consistent guidance from the cabinet and administration. Please urge the cabinet and administration to display respect for teachers and parents by providing clarity and direction to all stakeholders in the City School District of Albany. The next public comment is from Teresa Bichent. Dear Board of Education, our school doors are opening next week and have been cracked open virtually now for more than a week. I've seen dedicated staff teaching wonderful lessons to their students already, all the while knowing that they have been laid off and will not be around to see the school through with these children. They are putting in the work for the children of Albany because at this point, they cannot even tell their students and their families exactly who their teacher will be this year. This is a disgrace to our profession and to our students and their families. My laid-off colleagues are truly a class act maintaining their classes and reassuring their students in this time of great uncertainty. Stop hiding behind them and their professionalism and preserve the teachers who have budding relationships already with our children. More importantly, I speak for our L families who trust our schools will do what is best for their children. Many of our families do not presume to speak up about their children's educational needs because nor are many of them sufficiently fluent in English to come to the table here. Our L families need teachers that know their families plain and simple, so that their children can succeed in school and achieve the American dream. This familiarity is blown apart by eliminating beloved teachers at this point early in the school year and by shifting teachers from building to building based on seniority. We are not living up to the trust that our families place in us. The next message is from Helen Martin. I'm writing as a concerned elementary art teacher in the district. While I understand that the budget cuts have caused severe staff shortages, the decision to use special area teachers in the elementary schools to cover classes and teach assignments left by the classroom teachers is being done at the expense of teaching our children the arts. Art, music and phys ed are not extras. They are the place in our curriculum where children can explore their interests, express themselves and develop their brains. The arts and physical education help create critical pathways in the brain that allow children to integrate their learning in all subject areas. I have approximately five hundred and fifty students in my home building and twelve and a half hours a week scheduled to work with them because half of my day will be taken by supervision, not related to teaching my specialty. If I spend all this time solely reviewing work submitted by students, I will have one and a third minute to devote to each child. I have been informed that due to job cuts, I can expect to have another approximately two hundred and seventy-five students from another building added to my roster. This situation is breaking my heart. I feel as if I cannot offer my students the rich art program they deserve. I have been asked to resume teaching to the standards and grading and not given the time needed to do this. The next message is from Chris Hannan. Good evening. I have been a teacher in the Albany City School District for almost twenty years, and I thought I'd seen it all. Never in my wildest imagination could I have come up with the situation we are now faced with. The teachers of this district have listened to many voices calling for the board to save jobs of teaching assistants, security, hall monitors and support staff because they are vital to the lives of the students. This is true. Teachers are also vital to the lives of the students and need to be respected as the highly-trained professionals they are. Think back to your own childhood and growing up. You don't remember the tech of the day, the worksheets or textbooks. You remember the teachers who were there for you. You remember the feelings of safety, the Band-Aids that came with the hug, the coach who pushed you when you wanted to give up in sports or music or classroom. Everyone remembers a favorite teacher. At the present moment, I feel the district is ignoring a huge talent pool and not meeting with the teachers via APSTA to help with whatever it takes to open our school safely in an organized manner. The teachers are the frontline, working with the students virtually and in person. Yet we receive directions that contradict reality daily. Teachers are let go, transferred, told to move materials and don't know assignments, yet school is underway virtually and the students arrive in person in a few days. The buildings aren't ready, yet the upper administration remains intact. How can the board have confidence in an administration that has not thought through the cuts and put plans, put its plans in place? People's lives are being upended with no end in sight, and the media reports the cuts are premature. It is time for teachers to be treated as professionals that we are. Sometimes it appears that it's all in for admin and not all in for Albany, and please do not let this continue. Thank you for your consideration, Chris Hannan. And my final comment is from Trish Selim. Dear Members of the Board of Education, I write to express my deep concern about the staff reductions that have impacted student support services, specifically the loss of dedicated and talented social workers and behavioral specialists. During such difficult times where students and their families are being impacted by pandemic disease, gun violence and forced isolation due to remote learning, we need these resources for our students. We know that our students have lived experiences that involve trauma, and this trauma impacts their ability to learn and grow. Cutting these essential employees only sets our students back even farther. As a parent, I have firsthand experience with the student support team. One of my children utilized a full-service center at Hackham, almost daily. With the support of these caring staff, my child may have not been able to make it through a school day. My child did not need extra academic support, but needed social, emotional support to thrive. As my child finished eighth grade last spring, she worked with, she worked with, set up a, the social worker she worked with, set up a Google Meet so that my child could meet the social worker at the high school academy where she was enrolled. Both of these staffers took the time to make these important connections for a child who really needs the support. Now, both of these social workers have lost their jobs. Who will be available to help the students who are now isolated at home and in need of social, emotional support? I work in higher education and see students entering college with increasing issues of anxiety, depression, isolation and loneliness. of anxiety, depression, isolation, and loneliness. As a district, Albany needs to help have services in place to help students manage these issues in a healthy way. Forcing all seven to 12 students into remote learning and removing the wraparound services that they need is a dangerous combination. Kids need to be in school, and we need to provide them support. Please reconsider the reductions in student support services. We need social workers and behavioral specialists to support our students during these difficult times. Trish Selim, parent.
Okay, I have the next set. My first letter is from Tammy Caletta. She writes, Dear members of the board, As I began my 30th year with the district, I am able to reflect on the changes I have witnessed. So many of these changes have been inspiring and uplifting. Sadly, some things seem to remain the same. The overall tone from Academy Park has been and continues to be unsupportive of faculty and staff. I have repeatedly witnessed the district's refusal to meet with its teachers through AppSta. The latest example is canceling the last two scheduled meetings with AppSta. While I can appreciate the task you have, I cannot fathom why you refuse to meet with the people who work with the families in Albany. As teachers, we have a large impact on the way your vision is met, yet you disregard us at every turn. I am disappointed in the message that you send. In addition to the negative relationship you foster with your teachers, you struggle to communicate clearly to the people who you need in order to effectively share your message. I should not be telling parents we don't know when we are a week into our school year. We should be a harbor during a storm. The lack of clear decisions, effectively communicated, means we cannot be this for our families. There are too many unknowns for us to offer security to our families. There has been a bright light in the last few weeks. After years of micromanaging your teachers with excessive testing to hold us accountable, non-negotiables to limit our professionalism, schedules that are to be followed to the minute, constant on-task from first bell to last that limits our students' ability to process their learning, we are suddenly realizing that maybe all of these decisions weren't as necessary as you thought. Hopefully, members of the cabinet will also use this time to reflect. Our children are losing out because of lack of communication and lack of respect for teacher autonomy. When we recite the current mantra "all in for Albany," I hope members of the cabinet stop and have a mindful moment about what this could really mean. All parties must be at the table for us to truly be able to make the change we are desperately need, we all desperately need and want for our children. The next is from Frederick Luciani, who writes, Until recently, I believed that my wife represented more than just a number to the district. There was a time when I know she felt like a valued educator and a proud member of the City School District of Albany. This all changed for her last week. Our life was turned upside down when she was laid off. We were shocked because she had seen the previous seniority list and knew that there had been many teachers hired after her 2016 transfer. Also, she had been with the district and AppSta since 2006 as a classroom teacher. During the Google Meet layoff, my wife and her AppSta representative learned that the director had not been aware of her layoff. Her principal was simply given a list of who she had to lay off with no other information. After the meeting, her AppSta rep noticed an error on the updated seniority list. Her hire date had been changed from 2016 to 2019. She contacted HR to inquire, and we waited to hear what this meant. The next afternoon, she received an email back from HR apologizing for the angst they caused, and that was indeed an error. I thought we would be thrilled to receive a response that this was all a big mistake, but our happiness quickly turned to anger. How could a mistake like this happen? How could the district not recognize that she had been teaching here since 2006 and transferred to E&amp;L in 2016? How can such careless mistake that has such huge ramifications on someone's life be allowed to happen? It is simply infuriating that a careful review of each and every one of your employees is not occurring. If it were, this could not possibly have happened. This district should be ashamed of the lack of regard and carelessness that led to this situation. Why are these layoffs not more transparent? Why would the leadership of her department not be consulted before their own staff are laid off? Certainly, someone who actually knows her would have caught the error. They would know she had been with the department for more than one year, right? There are cuts happening so rapidly, and it seems like they are happening with little to no accountability. Why won't the district meet with AppSta? Where's everyone, where's everyone 20%? Your employees are not just numbers; they deserve better. And my next is from Rachel Luciani. Excuse me. Do you understand that we have asked parents to choose which of their children will receive an education? While calling families to ask how I can help their children get on their Google Classroom, I heard from a mother who said she has been waiting for another Chromebook that the district promised was coming. She has had one Chromebook to share between her seven children since March. She has twins in kindergarten, one child in fourth and seventh grade, and three children in high school. She explained to me that her kindergartners couldn't attend their Google meets because her older children needed the Chromebook. She explained that her heart is breaking. Her heart rightfully breaks watching her children sit idly, unable to access their education. I told her I was sorry. I cannot imagine what she's been going through. I understand that no one could see this pandemic coming and that this is unlike anything that has happened in recent history. However, it is now September, and we still have families with one Chromebook and multiple children. I can also tell you, she isn't the only mother who my coworkers and I have spoken with that has a similar situation. I started a GoFundMe to purchase tablets for her twins. Myself and others have asked people for help so that our students could access their education. Our schools have a responsibility to provide free and appropriate education to our children. I am speaking for this mother today because her voice deserves to be heard. She told me that in her country where she came, the teachers cared about the students and would advocate for them. Here, she feels alone. I am sorry that we have lost her trust and that we have failed her. We cannot lose the faith of our families. I also feel like I have more questions than answers. Every day, I'm told that things are changing daily, but I cannot stand quiet anymore and watch this injustice. We continue to operate in chaos. We have teachers still waiting for assignments. I am still waiting to hear exactly what my role will be. We need to do better. We cannot ask parents to choose which of their children they would like to receive an education. We need answers. Our teachers, staff, families, and most importantly, our children deserve more. My next comment is from Emily Shoup, who writes, Dear board, In-person schooling starts Monday. Virtual learning has already begun. Members of my team have been cut, changed, or still have no idea what or where they're teaching. This is beyond unacceptable. Communication, or lack thereof, is changing daily. Depending on who you speak to, information is completely different. I spent over three hours doing work today that I was told needed to be completed, only to be emailed later that they changed their thinking. I have no location to teach in, or maybe I do, but no one can confirm it. When will we know if charter schools get to have 100 versus 80% of funding? Why is everything last minute? If the plan isn't in place, why are we opening already? Why did PPE just arrive in my location today? Why do some buildings have more information or time than others? I'm so sorry for all these questions, except that's how it is all day long, and we aren't getting any answers. Or the answers we do continue, excuse me, or the answers we do get continue to change, it makes it almost impossible to do a good job. I love meeting my students, virtually obviously. They're excited to learn, happy to see me, eager to begin projects, et cetera. They are the reason we are all here. We are the educators with them, and although we can smile and do our, do all our get-to-know-you activities, we are doing it through overworked and overstressed bodies. We just want to do the best job we can, and we are working all hours of the day and night only to be told something different again and again, if anything at all. If we seem confused and unsure of things in front of students or constantly have to say "I don't know the answer to that" to simple questions like "Who is my music teacher?" or "Will we have Jim?", then how can they trust us? We are the faces students see the most. Why are all of frontline workers kept in the dark and cut so drastically? We are united, but we need better than this. We want to be all in for Albany, but it's hard when there are so many uncertainties. So when you ask questions and make suggestions, continue to ask yourself and your board, your cabinet, are you all in for Albany? My next one is from Christina Parkevi. I hope I pronounced that wrong, correctly, rather. Apologies. She writes, Dear members of the Albany City School District, As a proud Giffen elementary teacher, I ask you to continue to put the needs of our most precious Albany City School District children and their families first. The recent job cuts have challenged our school community and removed some of the brightest and most committed colleagues I know. Please return these professionals to what they do best. Respectfully submitted. And my final letter is from Carmella Moore, who writes, Good evening. I am writing this letter to voice my concerns in regards to the budget cuts that have affected our school, Giffen. We're losing several teachers and support staff. Why is it the teachers? They are the ones who interact with our students daily. They are the ones who provide a nurturing, safe learning environment. Now more than ever, our children need us. Our community needs us. Why are we cutting teachers? Recently, our school has started to make gains. We are slowly getting our students where they need to be, and the budget cuts will put us behind again. We need our teachers and support staff to continue the work we have started, the work that is making our students successful. We need smaller class sizes and reading, math support. By cutting teachers and support staff, this will be impossible. Our number-one priority is the children, Albany, but is it? Please, please fund our schools. They are our future. Thank you.
My first comment comes from Christine Horton. Having listened in on a few meetings between teachers and students this week, I have found the lectures about expectations for virtual learning very troubling. These expectations indicate to me that the children are being seen and treated as if they are adults or even employees instead of the children that they are, children that are dealing with varying levels of trauma. The expectation should be very lax and realistic for the times that we are in. These are not normal times. If the kids are showing up, they should be welcomed, not lectured about their appearance or their home environment. Teachers are a guest in their space and have no right to comment on their appearance or the appearance of their homes unless there is a real issue of safety or inappropriateness. Even then, the children should not be called out and made to feel uncomfortable in front of their peers. Conversations should be held in private. We all need to remember that back in March, we picked up our children from school, and they never went back. Most haven't seen their friends since, and they haven't processed that or the rest of the traumatic things going on in the world. Most adults haven't processed it. We do not need to heap adult expectations onto traumatized children. The goal should be making a safe, welcoming environment where the kids will want to show up to learn and to with the expectations. My second letter says, Dear Albany School Board members, I am writing as a taxpayer and a parent in the Albany City School District. I realize that neither the board nor the ACSD can control the decisions of the federal and state government in regard to the funding shortfall. But the fact that this deliberate decision or lack of decision on the part of the governor and Congress will disproportionately impact our students and families cannot be ignored. If the state and federal government cannot make our kids and teachers a priority, then it is up to you to take a stand for them. I am imploring the board to be courageous. Do not make any staffing cuts. Instead, stop paying for everything but employee salaries. Stop paying the light bill, the internet bill. Stop payment on everything but those people who enrich our community by enriching our children. If those outside interests object to non-payment, direct them to the governor or to Congress. Force them to hurt children directly by cutting off the power or stopping food shipments to cafeterias. I bet they won't like having to play the bad guy. Before you take action or irreparably hurt our students and families, make sure you've exhausted every other option, including civil disobedience. This is an unprecedented time and calls for unprecedented actions. Be brave and take a stand for our community. Best, Shyla Adante, Albany resident. From Eric Soto. Dear City School District of Albany Board members, I am writing in for public comment, and as a current Albany city resident and friend of many teachers in the district, I am aware that this is a difficult time for all board and cabinet members. Making cuts is never an easy job, no matter what it is. The question that I have, though, is why there are current administrative retirees that were approved by the board to work and some that are already working, such as, sorry, such as a particular person at Harry Gibbons, at the rate of $650 per day? Surely, with all the cuts being proposed, I would hope that these individuals would be cut first. If clerical staff is being cut, why are retirees being brought into a job that someone else could do instead of losing their position? There seems to be a lot of administrative positions that carry large salaries that could be cut this time around instead of the lower-paid workers and cutting important student programs. If you could look into this, that would be greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Eric Soto. And the last letter of the evening, hopefully. We have a new system. So Ms. Bowie, did we miss anyone, or is this, have we achieved 100% once I read this one? We're good? Okay. Thank you very much. As those of you who are at board meeting, were here last week, know I missed a letter. So we have a new system, so that will never happen again, we hope. In any case, the last letter of the night. We know the board and administration will do everything they can to protect our schools and our students. The signers of this letter would be glad to join any public action the board wants to take to demand more funding from the state. We all realize it's time for the state's millionaires and billionaires to pay their fair share to fund our schools. For example, if the board wanted to hold a press conference, a community rally about the importance of raising revenue, we would gladly join that effort. No one in our community supports the decisions that have defunded our schools. Calling together our city stakeholders, from the unions to the parent organizations to the NAACP and the Common Council, to hold a large public event in support of our children would send a clear, unambiguous message to the state's decision-makers about supporting revenue raisers. We have done this before, and we believe that given the depth of the crisis we face, we can do it again. If the board leads, the people will follow. We encourage the board and district leaders to plan a public action and to build support to demand that the state's wealthiest people do their fair share to save our schools. This situation demands this dramatic and uniting kind of action. We are here to help in any way that we can. Thank you, Anita Thayer, Bill Ritchie, Bernie Mulligan, and Mark Mishler. So thank you all for your excellent reading, and I know that we all read these letters once when we receive them and then read them again out loud, and it is always helpful to hear them voiced as well as reading them in line. That is all the comments that were received by the deadline at 12:30 this afternoon. I drop people's attention to that deadline for next time because we did receive some letters after the deadline, but as a board have decided that we just need some kind of deadline, otherwise it's impossible for us to accurately make sure that we collect all the public comments. We really do appreciate your comments. We will read any that were received after the deadline at the next meeting. We find hearing from community members incredibly valuable, whether we read them aloud or not, and our contact information for both public comment and routine correspondence is at And that concludes public comment period and brings us to the routine consent part of the agenda. Those of you who come to board meetings a lot know that the routine consent agenda is when we approve routine matters for the district. These include routine contracts, field trips, routine personnel matters, and the like. Each board member reviews these items carefully, but we vote on them as a group with no discussion. That allows us to use our meeting time more efficiently. Nonetheless, each board member has the option to set aside any routine consent item to require a separate discussion and vote on that item. With that introduction, I will now entertain a motion to adopt the routine consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Ms. Smith, and the second, Dr. Tatur, are there any set asides? Hang on a second, let me come to my list. Board Member Ritchie, what would you like to set aside?
Hi, I would like to set aside, on number four, the HR. I'd like to set aside the addendum, please.
Okay. And Dr. Tatur?
I'd like to set aside number 20.
Number 20, Leah Demonia?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other set asides? Seeing none, all in favor of the routine consent agenda. Oh, Damaris, you're voting, or you have a set aside? Damaris Mann also set aside number 20. Okay. So all in favor of routine consent, less than the addendum part of the So all in favor of routine consent, less than the addendum part of the human resources, and item number 20, Leah Demonia? That is unanimous. And then we'll just do these in order. Can I have a motion to adopt the routine consent HR addendum? I believe, let's have a motion first. Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Smith. And I will ask if there's any discussion, and I will ask to be sure that any discussion does not belong in executive session, so I don't know what the particular issue is, so think about it.
I don't know if it belongs in an executive session because it's not about a specific employee, but it was just, I was looking at the number three on the addendum transfers, and I didn't notice any transfers of elementary school students to Delaware communities, sorry, elementary school teachers to DCS. So I just wanted to confirm that we were going to be transferring an elementary school teacher to DCS? And that when would that person show up on a transfer?
So I'm going to repeat the question. The question is, and I haven't looked at this with this eye myself, so hopefully I've got this right, Ellen. She doesn't see any pre-K teachers transferred to DCS?
Not pre-K, any elementary school teachers?
Oh, elementary school teachers. She doesn't see any elementary school teachers transferred to DCS and wants to confirm that in fact we are transferring an elementary teacher there.
Dr. Wilson Turner, I would appreciate if you would address that question, please?
Yes, we are. Teacher, elementary school teachers, yes.
And so that will show up on a future routine consent agenda? Is that, if it's not there tonight, it'll come later?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So is it possible for a teacher to change his or her duties before this transfer goes through, or would that not happen until the next meeting at which that transfer actually
Yeah, we're having the acoustics in this room. The question is, if the transfer does not happen until the next board meeting, can the teacher begin their service prior to the board action?
My understanding is yes.
I know that we have a policy that's very specific when we hire to make that possible. I would have to read the policy for specific language to make sure that it's possible for transfers, but we ought to make sure that the policy is clear on that because that was certainly the intent, that the administration would be free to do what they needed to do to ensure a sound educational environment in every classroom.
That is correct. And Mr. Petron, if we are incorrect, would you please let us know?
Thank you.
We're all set.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the addendum, item four? All in favor? That is unanimous. Ms. Mann, did you care to vote for this, or do you have further discussion? Good? Okay. That is unanimous. And now item 20, Leah Demonia, may I have a motion? Ms. Wilson, the second. Board Member Creji, any discussion? Dr. Tatur?
Yeah, this contract is for the turtle pond and the fish tank maintenance in the Montessori, I believe. I just want to know, given the cuts and the budget crisis that we're in, what prioritizes this over other things for students?
The question is, and I think we really do need maybe to shift one of these monitors towards the superintendent because I think she's having a really hard time hearing. The question is, with the $3,900 contract for the maintenance of the aquariums and the turtle pond at Montessori Magnet School, how does that relate to priorities in terms of serving students, given our extremely limited financial situation?
So I will begin. Thank you very much, Dr. Tatur, and thank you, Madam President, for repeating the question. I appreciate that. And I will start, and then I will have Dr. Wilson Turner fill in any gaps that may still exist. One of the things that we've looked at is, because we did pull this before and we did go back and look at it, number one, there are no, we've not had any volunteers come forward to be able to do that. And then the work that does need to be done, this company has done a really good job with that, and we know that that is a part of the program there. And seeing that we do still have students in person, and it will be maintained, that we do need that level of service. Dr. Wilson Turner, is there anything that we need to add?
No, just that we did not make cuts to the Magnet School programs, as Mrs. Adams has indicated, and this would be part of one of the things that their budget goes
Any further discussion? Mr. Board Member Mann?
It also looks like, when it talks about the funding source, that it's grant funded?
It's not grant funded. It is funded through the Magnet budget line, which is a dedicated budget line for the Magnet School programs.
Do I recall correctly that each school has dedicated funds, whether they're on the Magnet line or on a different line, there's specific funds allocated to each school?
Each school has a supply line and lines that are, budget lines that are dedicated to them, but our three Magnet schools in our dual-language program do have a dedicated budget line that we were responsible for maintaining when they came off of the original Magnet grant years and years and years ago to sustain programming at our Magnet schools.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor? Wait, Board Member Emilia, you have a question?
It's less of a question, more of an observation, that doctors' offices within the last one or two years have all removed their fish tanks because of germ issues. And I just want to make that known. I understand it's part of the program, and it's probably one of the nicer things that kids can come in and see, so I'm not knocking it, but I'd like to know that we're keeping some kind of barrier so kids aren't putting their faces and hands and noses against it.
I will just respond to the comment that we work closely with the Department of Health last year, specifically in response to the turtle pond that we have at Montessori and some of our other spaces in other schools in our district, to assure that we are in compliance with having animals in the school buildings the way that we do and in compliance with the Hartman Health Regulations.
Dr. Tatur?
Yeah, so I wasn't trying to dissuade from having the fish tanks or the turtle pond, because, I mean, I like, I have aquariums at home, too, so the, there's a lot of teaching moments that you can have with a fish tank, so, but my concern was more in terms of can we do this in-house? But the answer seems to be we haven't found people to step in and do it. I mean, it's a small expense, but every small thing adds up eventually, so.
Any further conversation? All in favor of adopting the contract with Mr. Demonia, Ms. Demonia? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And that brings us to the end of the routine consent agenda. And from the very small, we are going to now go to the very large. And I turn the floor over to the superintendent to talk about the discussion, to introduce the topic of the recent news we've had on budget.
Thank you very much, Madam President and members of the board. Again, I want to start by saying that the budget impact and the things that we are looking at right now are very difficult, and they are, these are challenging times that are combined with a worldwide pandemic, housing inefficiencies, people who are losing their homes at this time, healthcare concerns throughout, and issues that are way beyond the control of a school district, but yet impact every aspect of what we do. And so when we think of all of those things and then we look at the fact that in our vision, mission, and goals, we are still looking at how we can educate our children and keep them first, despite all the things that are happening around them, to them, with them, and the families and the employees within our district. Everyone is feeling this. Our entire society is feeling this. People are feeling it at different levels, at different angles, but every single person is feeling all of the angst, all of the uncertainty. And when there is a lack of stability, these are the things that we try to cling to to find normalcy, and schools are absolutely that. Because throughout many issues, it has been the schools that have always been that consistent piece for families that we could always count on. And unfortunately, where we are in our society, the stability of our schools and the stability of our public schools specifically are absolutely being challenged and in some respects threatened with what we're able to do. Our objective tonight is absolutely to update the board on the current status of state and federal aid reductions for the 2021 school year. And throughout this presentation, we will address some of the concerns that have been brought about recently through the media and address some of the items for discussion. And then, of course, at the end, we will open it up for any questions that the board may need to ask. Several goals that we have, even throughout the school aid reduction pieces. Number one, as a school district, we must have a balanced budget, and this is something that we cannot not do. We must do that. And it is our responsibility to look not only currently at where we are fiscally, but project forward. I will say that I welcome Kimberly Roaring, who is our Deputy Superintendent of Business and Finance, and that ability to project forward and look ahead at what may happen in our what-if scenarios is an outstanding quality that she has, the clarity by which she can explain those items to us and help us understand, those of us who are not financial wizards. You know, she can help us understand that and be patient in explaining those things to us, and I do appreciate that she brings to the table. It is interesting that in her first year, she has absolutely seen numerous challenges that no crystal ball could have ever anticipated, and she has moved through with the utmost level of professionalism and attention to detail that I think helps us as a district be able to understand the impact of the decisions that we are making, even though we may not like them. We absolutely have clarity with regard to how those decisions will impact us down the line. We know that we want our families to have certainty, and unfortunately, with the rapid changing pieces that we are going through and as we are receiving information in real time, it is going to change, and there will be uncertainty. And when we started this process back in March, we knew that we were going to have that uncertainty because of a worldwide pandemic that none of us have been through before. And so when we put all of that in perspective, we, again, may not like that, and it is absolutely uncomfortable, because we like routines, we like to know what's happening when, we like to know that if we do X, then Y is going to happen. And unfortunately, with a worldwide pandemic that none of us have experienced at any level, we don't have those answers. And for, I will say, people like me who are used to problem solving and having all the answers, having to answer "I don't know" is the most uncomfortable thing that any leader would have to answer. However, in answering the "I don't know" and looking for solutions, that is also what leadership is about. Because being open and honest and transparent about what we don't know is absolutely what we have to do as a district. One of the reasons that we were able to have our forums and hear from our parents and get ideas from our students, from our teachers, from our parents, from our community members, it is extremely important, because that information has helped us get to some solutions of where we are. We also know that we want to have our students in person as much as we can. We know that our students learn best when they are in person with their teachers, with their support staff, and with their administrators. I've often said, everyone is important in this organization. We are just important differently. And so having that respect for all of our positions, it doesn't mean that positions won't be reduced. Reducing positions doesn't mean that we don't respect the positions and the work that's done. The reduction of our positions is a financial concern, because we know that this has to happen so that we, as a district, can at least provide the services in whatever model we have to develop for our students. And so we do know that if funding is available, we want to make sure that we can maximize in-person learning. We also know that if that funding is not available, that we look to prioritize that learning and that model and those students that come in for our most vulnerable populations. One of the things that we've been able to do is provide the opportunity for our self-contained special education students to be on campus each day, provided that is the option for our parents, that they have selected that. And so to have those services available is absolutely important, and I commend our special education department with regard to that, knowing that there may be reductions in those departments. We also know that we need to look at our programming, because it is not always the core content information that motivates students to be in school. We know that our students are motivated by hands-on activities, our CTE program, music, art, and the like. And we look to see, as we have talked about in our Phase Two, what is that going to look like as we try to bring those hands-on and engaging courses to life and bring them back to our campuses? So we have put that in the works so that we can see what that looks like. Those plans have not been finalized, and so I'll say this, not being callous in saying it, but saying it very intentionally. That would be another change, but it's still a change for the better. And so we have to understand that those types of things are going to happen. When we look at that particular piece in terms of Phase Two and ensuring that our students can have those hands-on opportunities, it may be a schedule change, it may be a location change, it may be a room change. Those things may happen, because as we know more and we know better, we hope to absolutely do better and to have those experiences for our students. And we want to always maintain as many staff members as possible. It is not advantageous for a school district to lay off individuals at any level. That is not anything that a school district benefits from, and we understand that. But we also understand, when I go back to that first point, we have to have a balanced budget. We cannot bankrupt our system, because if we do, those consequences are greater than if we make reductions now and then move through, such that if our funding comes back, then we can look at strategically, how do we rebuild those things that we had to pull out? After our goals, we do want to make sure that we are looking at the fiscal impact with regard to our decisions, and at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Roaring so that she can discuss the fiscal impact component.
Thank you, Superintendent Adams. On August 20th, we were notified via the first quarterly state budget financial plan update released by the Division of Budget that there could be some reductions in our state aid this year. They changed their language to refer to minimum reductions as opposed to maximum reductions, and that was something we took very special notice of. With no federal action to provide COVID relief, since the state's fiscal year began on August, April 1st, pardon me, April 1st, we could be looking at a 20% reduction in state aid. They have begun withholding 20% from most of the aid to locality payments that were pushed out the door for Albany City Schools. That meant a reduction in our August payment of aid, which is actually 2019-20 payment. We were shorted on that payment by about seven We were shorted on that payment by about $790,000. For our district, a 20% reduction in foundation aid is about $16.5 million. If it's applied to all state aid categories, that would be a little over $23 million for us in the 2021 fiscal year. In equitable impacts in high-need districts, a 20% reduction for all New York districts would not mean the same impact. According to Alliance for Quality Education on September 1st, 2020, New York's 205 high-need school districts, including Albany, educate 75% of our economically disadvantaged students in the state and 63% of African-American and Latina students. High-need school districts are facing an average cut of over $2,600 per student, while low-needs districts are facing an average cut of about $873 per student. In Albany, the potential impact of a 20% reduction in foundation aid would be a little over $1,500 per student. And at 20% of cost, all categories would be over $2,140. When we look at the equity updates, media reports this week indicate the following updates or actions may be forthcoming from the state, but no official notification has occurred to date. The state will not withhold 20% of first school aid payment of its 2021 fiscal year due at the end of September. Potential Albany impact, our anticipated aid payment is about $13.6 million. That's primarily funded by lottery aid and VLT. 20% reduction in that would be $2.7 million. The State Budget Director has quoted in the September 16th Times Union indicating that the state will protect high-needs districts from the impact as much as possible if the federal government does not provide additional supports for schools. However, he does not provide any specifics as to what that may mean.
At this juncture, I think it's important to look at what we know because I know that there is a concern as to the district either acting too soon, which we've heard that before, or now acting prematurely. And so what we have to do is we have to look at the evidence that is before us in order to make decisions for our organization. And so the evidence and the factors that have gone into our decision-making are here in front of you. In August, we knew that the state did not close out the previous year's state aid, and we've not received that yet. And that is what Ms. Roaring just referenced. And that was approximately $790,000. So we have not received that to make us whole from the previous year. We've also received notification, this was back in early August, that we would receive a reduction, a 20% reduction for our UPK funding, which equated to approximately $1.1 million. And so when we were notified, these reductions already started happening. So when you are faced with, here's our budget. We are expecting X amount of dollars, but yet it is a 20% reduction. And now we have to shift and make adjustments in our pre-K program by limiting the options for our families, by capping the enrollment because we need to make sure that we can at least serve the students at some level. Those reductions already started happening. And then our September payment, if it comes in full, we would be ahead by $810,000. However, that is still $2.7 million less than what we would normally receive. So the note at the bottom of the slide, I think, is extremely important. There are two pieces to that. We did not receive any state aid payments for 2021 in July or August. We know that that is typical. However, September would be the first state aid payment for the school year. If that payment is reduced by 20% or an amount near there, that's approximately the $2.7 million that we would not receive. So knowing this information, when we received the information in August with regard to, from the Division of Budget, from the State Division of Budget in their annual first-quarter report, saying to us as schools, we need to prepare for a minimum of a 20% reduction. When these things have already happened, it would be fiscally irresponsible for us not to make changes necessary. Because we don't know how deeply those cuts are going to go. And if we wait and push things out, then we have less of our budget to reduce, which means greater cuts to our staffing. So the other component that I think is important is looking at future equity considerations. When we talked a few weeks ago, we talked about the equitable distribution of school funding, which would mean that districts who depend on state aid less would be, would receive higher reductions. Districts like ours that depend heavily on state aid would have a reduced reduction. So instead of the 20% reduction, looking at the 10% reduction, looking at a 5% reduction, whatever the case may be, but not holding all districts at the same level because the funding for our districts and the dependency on state aid is very different. And the more dependent a district is on state aid, the deeper the cuts. There are other districts that we have seen in the newspaper where their cuts are even deeper than ours, but that is because they have a higher dependency on state aid. There are districts around us that have not felt the reduction of 20% because the reductions are based on what your state aid is. And so by them depending less on state aid, their 20% reduction is less and can be absorbed in other areas other than staffing. We put out last time that, at our last board meeting, that we were looking at the equitable distribution of aid reductions with regard to charter schools and the payments that we, as a district, make to charter schools. A 20% reduction in that annual charter school payment would equal approximately $7 million. That is significant for our district. We also know that December 31st, there is another aid lookback. And we've talked about this over the past few weeks. There is another aid lookback. And at that point, the state will evaluate their finances and look at the current fiscal year in order to provide guidance about the state's ability to meet its budget projections. What that means is that roughly around April, which is the end of our state's fiscal year, they would have to balance their budget. In order to do that, that means that we may have to take reductions. If you look at the report from the Division of Budget, you would go, you are able to go through and see in the charts provided the projections of what that looks like. In the narrative sections, there are areas of concern with regard to our state being able to meet that budget. And it clearly states that there would be reductions for schools. Again, decisions have to be made based on the information that is provided to us. And so in doing that, we have to look at, what do we need to do that is fiscally responsible so that when the next lookback happens in December, that we are prepared? Because if there's no action now, then it would be greater cuts moving forward. So at this time, we are presenting roughly two options for the board to consider. Option A, continue with staffing and program reductions as planned. We can definitely increase our staffing if more funds become available than we currently have. And should that happen, we are, as I said before, it is not advantageous for a school district to reduce its staff. It's not. And so if funding were restored, if those dollars were to come in, then we would absolutely look at ways to rebuild and bring back those programs. And the reason I say that is because at this juncture, we are looking at $16 million. If we get $16 million from the state to cover our state aid, then we can absolutely strategically put things back in place. If we only get $2 million or $3 million, then we have to look and prioritize, what are those things that we rebuild and bring back? And that would come from a priority list based on the things that we need. Our seniority list then works in reverse order, and that's contractual. That is the process. And so we would absolutely do that. We would definitely reduce, we would realize the savings of $1.4 million per month because that is what the impact is on our budget each month moving forward. There are no, if there are no significant state aid reductions, we do anticipate that there would be. These savings could help us maintain the program as planned, which is our 712 virtual and our pre-K to sixth grade and self-contained special education students in person. We also look that these funds would help us as we move forward with our Phase Two in order to look at our CTE courses, science labs, music ensembles, art classes, et cetera, those hands-on components so that we can build that in as we have planned. We're also looking at, you heard earlier that we are looking at participating in the low-risk sports, and we are working with that. Even though our athletics department has taken a significant reduction as well, we are still able to look at, we would still be able to look at how our students can have some of those extracurricular activities as well as clubs. And then we would have to look at that on an individual basis as to, again, how do we continue to do those things and build them in to our program? If our reductions are not as significant as we think they may be, then we would be in a position to prioritize and build back in those things that we had to reduce. There's also the opportunity for additional mental health and social-emotional-related support for our students and our staff. And then the in-person services for our students that are the most vulnerable, we would be able to maintain those programs and services. Option B is to delay staffing and program reductions to a later date. State reductions related to the June 30th lookback period, at the earliest, would be mid-October. There's no way to predict state aid reductions related to the December 31st lookback period. And based on the timeline that we are experiencing right now, that would push us to mid-April or later with regard to decisions. And at that point, if there were 20% reductions, you can see how it magnifies the concerns that we are facing even now. The impact of the November federal election, regardless of the outcome, we wouldn't, we probably wouldn't know anything until mid-February, depending on what happens with the Department, with the Federal Department of Education and how information filters to the states and then the local school districts. And so, again, regardless of the outcome of the November election, we would still be looking at mid-February before we would know what we would be able to do. Those dollars might not be available to mitigate against any reductions in state aid. And the savings might be found across in a shorter period of time. But that savings in a short amount of time increases the number of staff that would be impacted by that. Social distancing in COVID-19 era, these requirements, while we are experiencing some release of some of the requirements as we move forward, we still can't predict what that might be. And so when you look at a classroom setting, a classroom might have 24 students. However, the classroom is split in half now because the teacher with social distancing may only have 10 or 12 students in one side, and then there's 10 or 12 students on the other side or in another classroom. And if we return to our original program now, then we would definitely have to reduce later if there were additional reductions. And then that would be even more changes for our families and our students. So the recommendation is that we continue with staffing and programming reductions as planned. If the Department of Budget, I'm sorry, if the Division of Budget provides additional information, we can add back staff. I do want to just emphasize that the information that we have is from the media. We have not received anything directly from the State Department directly with any guidance with regard to not having reductions at this time. We would also propose that during this time of uncertainty, that our district participate and write a written report, oh, I'm sorry, based on the written report for the Department of Budget requiring those reductions, we would like some additional information and guidance. And then our community rally with us so that we can make sure that we are writing our letters to emphasize what we need as a district. We do still advocate that our charter schools should, and I know it's not a popular statement to make, however, if we are experiencing 20% reduction, 15%, 10% reductions, that it be equitably distributed not only among school districts, but also among the charter schools. And that's also part of our advocacy. We would be in a position to rebuild our programs. And should our financial picture improve, we would be able to address that and to move forward. And then the last part of the recommendation is that we schedule a meeting, another board meeting, in order to address staffing if funding is allocated. So between now and whenever that may happen, that we would schedule a meeting in order to look at what that plan is to rebuild in our program. So at this time, I will open the floor for questions.
All right, board colleagues. This has been possibly the craziest week in the existence of any school board ever, anywhere. Never before in my six years on the board have I learned about something that is pertinent to the success of a school district by reading about it in the newspaper. Normally, we get, you know, some sort of formal information. And so reacting to that in this way is really very surprising. It has been a very interesting couple of days. I'm actually thinking it's not even been 48 hours since we first learned of this and learned of the reporting on this rather than learned of this because we still have no formal information. So I am just sort of stumped by it. But in any case, as the superintendent and the deputy superintendent have walked us through where we are, how we got here, and what the options are that the district is facing and their pros and cons, I'm thinking we can walk through the questions as we often do along those same lines. So I'm thinking we'll go through Slide 5, the first slides up through Slide 5, which is sort of kind of what we knew already, right? That takes us through to kind of where we were. Then we could have, I'm sorry, Slide 6, which is the slide with the inequitable impact is the one I meant to say. So Slides 1 through 6 would be first. Then Slide 7, which is like the things that we have learned about in the newspaper slide. Then we would talk about Slide 8, which is what has actually happened to date and how that contrasts a little bit with how it's been talked about in the newspaper. And then finally, we would go, I'm sorry, I think Slides 8 and 9 could go together. And then we can talk about Option A and B, which is Slide 10 and 11. I don't have a really, I guess maybe we should do each one separately first. And then we can talk about how they compare and contrast when we get to the recommendation. So that gives me 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 sections. The first one is the longest one, Slides 1 through 6. Then Slide 7, Slides 8 and 9, and then 10, 11, and 12 each individually. Everybody okay with that mini-agenda? Everybody okay with that mini-agenda? Yeah, nodding, everyone? Okay, so anybody have any questions or commentary on Slides 1 through 6? Dr. Shatur, was that a hand?
It's more a comment. The whole point of a budget is that you know how much money you have to spend, and you can plan accordingly. So right in April or July, when they set this budget and said, there's going to be look-back periods that will take your money away, that is not how you do a budget. Okay, so that, there's a big problem right there. So this is really difficult. I mean, how do you plan to do something without knowing what resources you do have to plan with? That was my comment.
Ms. Smith.
Dr. Shatur, I agree with you there. I, geez, this really is just horrible. I think that it is, we knew this pre-COVID, but we certainly know it now. And we have known over the past year when it comes to equity that we don't have that in this state. And so this situation that we're in now just highlights the need ever more for the formula change around the distribution of funds to school districts. And I would say, you know, the wealthier, you know, and I'm, you know, it's always hard, but something's got to give. And we're all going to have to give up. Those with privilege, what have we been talking about? Those with more means, more privilege are going to have to give a bit more so that we have achieved or we're able to achieve greater equity for all students. And we are, we're here, this has got to happen. The other thing, and it's also just much more difficult to hear, you know, folks talk about, you know, equity, talk about Black and Brown students and the caring and love that we have and need to give towards those communities and not really have the demonstrated, you know, impact of that belief. So I'm just beyond furious at the moment, and I'm sure many of us are. I think, and I know we'll come to it, but I also thought that the superintendent laid out some, in her recommendation, some things that I definitely want to support, and I'll save that for later to get to. I just wanted to, another comment here was, I do think that, I think that, in my own view, that the 20% that we're taking now at, you know, sort of at the $16 million level, I think it's the safest means. This feels an awful lot like our budget in the earlier this year. I think I heard a comment earlier, Dr. Shatur. You've made such a comment, it does, it feels very difficult. But I feel like we have to make this step now to mitigate or to certainly reduce greater harm down the road and sudden harm at that, devastating harm. So more devastating harm. So anyway, those are my comments for the moment. Thank you.
Board Member Emanyawi.
So as a lot of the public comments mentioned today, I also believe that we haven't necessarily seen this problem completely through. But at the same time, if you want to look at it as an analogy, if we stick around to see it all the way through, there won't, the impact will be greater. So if it's a train and you know the train is going to crash, do you get closer and stick around and wait for it to crash? It's a terrible situation. That said, I do have a question regarding teachers specifically. And I, I mean, I'd like to work this out in my mind because I know the Governor and the Division of Budget, you know, I don't want to call it playing a game, but it's like a game of chicken. That, you know, they'll say, yes, we agree with you guys. We want to take care of our highest need districts, but they don't give us clear guidance. So when we act, they then can make their action based on our action. So if we don't act, maybe it puts them in a more difficult position. Maybe they have to act. Either way, really difficult to say what's going to happen. But in the case that we do go through with these cuts, I'd like to know about, sorry, my notes here. I'd like to know that we would be putting our staff back in the exact locations and positions that they had prior to these cuts. Is that something that's possible?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question a moment?
So if we carry on with the budget as proposed and the cuts and positions as proposed, but we get money from the state or we have a lesser reduction than 20%, they come back and they say, okay, we're only going to give you, we're only going to take 10%. We're going to withhold 10%. The positions that were cut, do those staff members, are they able to get back into their positions? And would they be able to go back into, I mean, let's just hypothetically say that the cut was, the cut was benign enough for us to resume in-person school, for example, for high school?
Thank you so, thank you so very much for that question. And I think it's a very important one because it's one that our employees ask as well. And so I will start, and then I will ask that Mr. Petron just chime in just to make sure that we are in alignment with the return of teachers should the funding come in, and then we are looking at bringing people back. There is a tenure area by which teachers will be able to come back to. As you know, if the position, the position has in many cases been abolished, and then if there are bumping, if there's bumping regarding seniority, then someone bumps into that position, okay? If we are bringing someone back, we are creating a position, and then that person coming back would go into that position. So Mr. Petron, if you could correct me if I am incorrect and set us on the right path, I would really appreciate that.
Superintendent, you captured it. Exactly. We have a vacant position. We offer it to a teacher who's on the recall list.
So I think the only thing that's important to recognize, and I think we all do, is that it may not be their old position, right? They may go, they will have an, if we bring a teacher back, it is the discretion of the administration how they deploy the resources who work for our district. So we define how many positions there are, and then they deploy the resources who fill those positions. So for example, the person might have been a elementary teacher at, let's say, New Scotland Elementary. But while they were not on the payroll, the staff was reallocated, and there is the position that becomes vacant for whatever reason. Is, let's say there's a retirement at ASH. There's now a vacancy at ASH. They could get filled into that ASH position, or it could be because of their special set of skills. The administration might say, well, you know, I really think, given this person, we're going to shift this other way, depending on what time of the year it happened, and all kinds of things can happen. So Vicky's been trying to get a word in anyways, and then Board Member Mann.
Sorry. But it also seems to me that you could have another situation where if we could call back folks, you may have another round of medical exemption requests, right? So there are a lot of factors that I think makes it almost, well, I won't say impossible, but very difficult to make any commitment that you can actually end up as a teacher or whatever your position was, back where you were before. I would not want to promise that. I would want, I would want to make sure folks had a job. That's, that would be the main goal.
I would like to add that also, we don't know when that would happen. So if it happened in a week, then we would be changing schedules again for students. If it happened in six months, you're still changing schedules again after students have gotten used to that routine.
That's actually, it was another part of a question that I had. If it does happen in a week, I mean, we've already kind of gone down this road.
Hey, Board Member Emanyawi, I just want to stop here one second because I'm trying to keep us on Slides 1 through 6. Do you think this question pertains to Slide 1 through 6? Or are you actually more like on the what happens with Options A and B kind of thing? I just want to go procedurally.
We can, we can hold off.
Can you hold off? I would appreciate that. Anybody else for Slides 1 through 6, which essentially establish our goals and our fiscal impact we understood regarding the 20%? Dr. Shatur?
So I also want to add that the state needs to fix its rules and laws that it has for schools. Just to give you an example, everybody can have a rainy day fund. Towns and municipalities can have 15, 5% to 15% of their budget put away for a rainy day. Schools can have no more than 4%. 4% that everybody says is not enough. If it's a rainy day, well, your roof's got a big hole in it, and you're going to be wet. So that needs to be fixed. The other thing about the districts is that, you know, you can fund it on taxes for districts like Albany. You have, you just install a tax gap, right, for the state? So you can go more than 2%. Now, even if you were to get as much as you, you're now increasing the taxes that the residents would have to pay. Well, there aren't that many places that pay taxes in Albany. So that adds another level of complexity. So unless the residents of Albany are expected to pay 50%, 60% taxes, there is no way for us to generate revenue to fix this gap. And these are things that the state needs to consider. When you talk about equity, you need to look at all of these factors and fix the formula so it addresses these issues. Don't just push it up year after year. Oh, you know, we'll push it, we'll talk about it. No, they need to be fixed because now we realize what happens when you don't fix it in time.
I want a plus one, everything you just said. Ms. Wilson, you're next, and then Ms. Mann.
Thank you. I appreciate Dr. Shatur's remarks because it's largely where, for what, very little I wanted to say about those slides was going to be emphasized. And I want to also state everything, plus one to everything he said, but also advocates in Albany, especially people who are newly paying attention or are increasing their attention on our district, I want to encourage you to stay with us during this time because this is where the fight really is, is in getting our equitable funding and maintaining that. This is something that has been ongoing in our district for a while. It's not getting like really equitable funding, and I think we're seeing the devastation of this coming to fruition in a pandemic. So that was the statement I wanted to make.
Board Member Mann.
I'm not going to waste a lot of precious time. I want to just join with the comments made by Board Member Wilson and Dr. Shatur also.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on Slides 1 through 6? Okay, let's move on then to Slide 7, which is the update slide, also known as the what we read in the newspaper slide. So any comments or questions? I'm going to just make sure somebody else doesn't see since you just went. Anybody besides Board Member Mann want to go right now? Otherwise, she gets to go twice in a row. Go ahead, Damaris.
So what I really appreciated, what I really appreciated in this slide and what I just want to reiterate is that there have been media reports this week, but there has been no official notification to date. So if there's any takeaway, that's what I really want to take away. And that, that a lot of thought has been taken into even presenting the options that are further in the presentation.
I'm going to just make another comment, building on what you said since I didn't take a turn on Slides 1 through 6. I was really pretty angry with the way that the framing was of the way the budget numbers were presented in some of the commentary from the state. I am going to try and politely suggest that they might need to go back to at least high school and review how to properly take a percentage to ensure that the numerator and the denominator are based on the same thing. It is accurate to say that we have had zero withholdings for our 2021 state aid. That is accurate because we have had zero payments for our 2021 state aid. To suggest that we have had 1% cut out of our fundamental state aid that will take us through the whole year is intentionally misleading. And there is no other way for me to interpret that language when someone as well-versed in finance writes that than to think that it was intentional. And I hate to say that because I like to believe that my elected representatives and their employees are working to be fair and accurate. But there is no way, no other way for me to interpret that. This slide says very clearly what has actually, could actually be saved in September if they really do, which is the, what they seem to be saying is they're going to pay us in full in September. It changes our fiscal position by $2.7 million. $2.7 million is a lot of money. I would gladly accept $2.7 million if somebody wanted to give it to me. But it is a lot less than $16 million, which is the bare minimum we need to recover. So I had to have to express my emotion about the way that that was shared because I think people in the community have been misled. And I'm particularly concerned about people who are not as sophisticated as I know everybody at this table is about being able to interpret those numbers, who are sitting at home and saying, why is my job on the line, right? Why is, why is my job on the line when the newspaper says that there hasn't been a cut? That is a terrible, terrible thing that has happened. And I just don't think it's, it's right the way it was done. But I do believe that we have to understand from our, the board's perspective, where we really sit. And that is going to drift us into Slide 8, which I will try not to presuppose too much, but that is really my issue. Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Just, I'm just echoing what you just said. I think very misleading to the public. And really, I was so angry over the words premature by the district. It was just awful all the way around. And it's really also calls upon us to try and make sure over time that we can have a populace that understands the, you know, the budget process. I mean, I, until I got onto this board, I wasn't really all that into it. You know, I was like, okay, you know, whatever. But having a better understanding of it, of the formulas, you know, the political games, it has made a big difference in how I view things. And I think it's very important for the public to, you know, engage in a process too of understanding what's real and what isn't. And we have to always question. So I don't want to criticize folks for raising the question with us, hey, why can't my job be saved because the state says, you know, there's money there, and they're not going to take it from you? But at the same time, we have to make them understand that's not the reality. And I do appreciate the superintendent laying out, laying that out very well in her message before getting to the particulars of the slides. So thank you.
Anyone else on Slide 7? Board Member Emanyawi, then Board Member Wilson.
So I know the article stated that they're not going to leave the higher-needs districts higher, high and dry, which is somewhat reassuring, but.
No, it's not. Show me the money.
Show me the money is right, but where I was going to is what is, what's really frustrating to me is I'm not seeing other, better-off districts, financially better-off districts, joining our fight with us. And I would really like to see that. And it's really frustrating seeing my own high school that is just down the road from us not saying a single word and paying lip service to changing hall names because they were slave owners, but not saying a single word about the ridiculous inequity in funding structures between their school and the school just down the road. It's really frustrating to me. So I just wanted to get that off my chest.
I think I said Board Member Wilson, then Board Member Mann.
Thank you. I think everything you stated, Ann, was a great synopsis of the reality that we're in, the situation where we are right now. And I want to sort of echo what you alluded to, which that in the community and in our community also, like the one that we're a part of, and the part. we're a part of and the part as leaders in the district, that's the information and the news we have been waiting for. And we naturally wanted to hear such a thing. And I want to also urge people to understand that I witnessed, we all witnessed the superintendent and cabinet working long hours throughout the summer, trying to understand where we will be at this time. And the scramble that people are feeling or, you know, the, the uncertainty, the, the way we've been upended in a lot of ways is a fallout of not knowing where we will be, not knowing that there will be possibly reductions. And it's all happening minute to minute, second by the second. So this is where we are in this moment. And, and understand that every delay has been put into place to delay or forego making any sort of decision either way. And as you can see, as of yesterday moments, really, I would say, we found out this. So this is where, I just want to frame that in the context of where we are also.
Board Member Mann.
I'm going to pass. I don't, everyone has said what I, what's on my mind. So thank you.
Okay. Are we good on seven? Or you have one, one more comment on seven?
I just want to make a comment that that statement was a very highly irresponsible one. And I don't expect people, elected representatives and their employees who represent me, say these things. Okay? It's one thing if the layman on the street says it. When somebody at a higher level makes a statement, it creates these issues. And we know that from the federal level, right? So we don't need to recreate that in our own, recreate that in our own state.
Okay. Board Member Elmenyawi, and then I'm hoping we can move on to slides eight and nine after this.
I just wanted to concur with what Secretary Wilson said about the cabinet and the superintendent. I've witnessed them doing a lot of late night work, early morning work. And I, I understand as a parent to two children that we always want to think about our kids. And I can say with assurity, I know the superintendent thinks about all of our children. So thank you.
We're ready? We're going to move on to slides eight and nine. So slides eight and nine, I'm going to colloquially call the what's really happening here slides, right? So slide eight in particular expresses exactly what's happened in math. And slide nine is sort of what, what seems likely to happen based on what we understand now. So questions or comments on slides eight and nine? Ms. Smith?
Yeah, just a small comment. I think the other thing, again, it's not necessarily that it's a known factor, but I think it's one that's being projected. And that is, we have no idea what the fiscal situation is going to be next year, the year after. You know, there are some projections that say, you know, we're talking two to three years of an impact, particularly if we don't, are not able to move past COVID situation where we are now. So I think we're, we're looking at something much longer term perhaps of an impact on our district. And particularly if we don't get any funding back this year.
Anyone else on slides eight and nine? Board Member Elmenyawi, and then Board Member Titor.
So I was actually going to ask this earlier, but this is the better place to say this. So if we go with option B, and let's just say, two weeks from now, we find that we have more money than we expected, how quickly and like, what would a pivot look like? Would we have to wait until the next quarter or semester in order to adjust because we've already gone down this path?
I think there are roughly two parts to that. I think there's an instructional component, and then there's also the financial component. So understanding that it is not good business to spend money that you don't have. So understanding what that dollar amount is and how it will impact our instructional program is critical. So depending on that dollar amount that is allotted to us, then we would have to look instructionally at how do we rebuild so that we can bring back positions or programs or things like that. And then that would be the instructional side. And then we have to look at the financial side. What does it mean to onboard at a particular time? What then does it mean when those allocations will be seen in our district? How will they come? Will it be 50% here, 50% later? All of those kind of financial components would determine that. And, and so in terms of a timeline, I think it's driven, for me to say to you, it would take one week. I can't answer that because it's going to look at how do we then rebuild within that instructional program? What's going to be that transition time to put those positions back in, acclimate students, acclimate parents? All of that would then kick into gear. We would end up changing schedules yet again. So we were able to do that within a week this time. You know, would we be able to do that in the future? So I, I answer that very loosely, simply because there are so many moving parts. But I would say that we would not have to wait until like January to build in a position. It may be the second nine weeks or the second reporting period at the beginning. Because as you know, the first one ends in November 13. So to put something in place so that by the second quarter, something could happen, that may be feasible.
Anybody else on eight or nine? Dr. Titor, I'm sorry, I forgot about you. Dr. Titor, and then Board Member Wilson.
You know, these reductions that they announced on August 28th are from the first look back. When did they do the first look back?
April 30th.
Okay. So why did they wait so long? You know, it's so rude to have people decide on all these plans, give them all these virtual plan, hybrid plan, all of those things, when they knew that they could have told us in April, they could have told us in June, they could have told us in July. Why did they wait till August? Okay, fine. They told us in August that they're going to cut this. That same day, we've all been screaming our heads off. What about the charter schools? It's been two weeks. Why are they delaying? If they really cared about equity and they really wanted to do something, there would be an announcement saying that 20% is applicable to charter schools. $7 million is today. We can plan better. They don't do that and just go and make all these grandiose statements like, oh, this is premature. This, I'm just pissed. Sorry.
Board Member Wilson.
And perhaps we're just all of the same mind at this moment because you said largely what I was going to state in that this is all in the context of the fact that we still have the same student population and still have the same great needs. And whether it's $1,500 or $2,100 for students, when they make an announcement like they did in August that they indeed were going to do 20% reductions, that's our payroll. We have to act accordingly, but we still have the same population and we still have the same needs. Like people stated, we're, we're in a traumatic event in the midst of a pandemic. Naturally, we want to support our students socially, from a social emotional standpoint, but with what resources.
I want to take it back to the math part just for a minute because I think this is really important on slide eight. Even if you believe that it's true that we're going to get our whole September payment, right, which is the only thing that's been said besides this very flowery language about we're going to protect our high needs districts, which is, I believe you guys have all very eloquently said, there's no evidence to suggest that they, that they're going to do that effectively since they could have done different things prior, right? So I understand that piece. But if you just look at the, the straight up math, if you even believe that they're going to give us back our 20% for our September payment, they did not say anything there about repair, replacing the UPK funds, right? That's $1.1 million. Talk about equity. We know our UPK kids need those programs, right? We all know that there's a good evidence that starting our, our most vulnerable populations at the school early results in good academic outcomes, as long as it's a high quality program, which ours are quite excellent with the thanks to Melissa Hacey and a wonderful team there. They also did not say anything about fixing last year's hole. In fact, they implied, again, the language is very interesting. They said, you know, we didn't, we, we made them whole for everything through June. Yes, because the money you owed us, you normally pay in August, but we spent it in June, right? This is the problem. That is the money we spent in June that they're supposed to pay us in August to make a hole, and they didn't. So they, way they crafted the language, they said, we were, we were solid through June. Yeah, because he didn't owe us till August. So even if they do that 2.7, it's not 2.7, it's only $810,000 because we're in the hole. We're like in the hole already. 1.9? 1.9? So 2.7 doesn't really get us a whole lot. Again, not that I wouldn't gladly accept $810,000 if somebody was to give it to me. And yes, that would pay for a couple of staff members if we knew that we weren't going to lose the $810,000 out of the March and April payment, which is when the big money starts hitting. So I'm sorry to focus everybody's math on that, but this, the math part is, is really critical to me. The other piece that I wanted to focus on, and I apologize if it's not this slide, I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that somewhere in here, it explicitly says that we get, oh, yes, here it is, the bottom of slide nine, I'm even on the right side. We get about half of our state aid in the final quarter of our fiscal year. Okay, think about that, okay? Half of the state aid comes in the last quarter. That means we're a little bit riding the credit card float on that money. Pardon me, Ms. Roaring, I don't mean to be, you know, oversimplifying your life, which I know is much more complex than that. But we're kind of spending that money before we get it, right? So that's the crux of the issue, right? We are, if we spend our money in anticipation of getting 100% of that, and we don't get 100% of that, we have overspent. And that's why we're going to suddenly need to, you know, to cut much more deeply. As Schenectady's superintendent said, they anticipated if there was a cut in through till July, if they held on till July, they might have to double the number of reductions they had. Twice as many staff members cut in, in January? Did I say July? January, if they, as opposed to now? So that's, that's the issue, is that the way the state aid flows, it's not like we get 12 equal payments or even 10 equal payments. If they did it that way, then we could kind of do a thing where we just sort of like spend the money that we have and see how we're doing. But that's, that's not how it works. The money is backloaded. It comes at the end. And so that's, I find really, again, very misleading about the way they share this information. Okay, I'm now done talking about math for the moment. Anybody else on slides eight or nine? Board Member Mann?
The reality is no business or no household could function like that. And if there's a takeaway from this, perhaps that's the takeaway. It's, it's just overall offensive. So, all right.
Okay. Everybody good to move on? So let's move on to slide, and it is getting rather late. So I think we should start looking at the agenda in terms of, and this, this deserves every minute we spend on it. I am not trying to shorten the conversation, but I am starting to think about whether we need to do some amendments of the agenda for other things and push things back. Okay, Superintendent will start thinking. So now we're going to do slide 10, which is option A, which is the pros and cons of continuing with the staffing and the program reductions as planned. So this is essentially what would happen if we reduce by the 222.1 that we've talked about. I don't know if you guys want to do option A and B, like slides 10 and 11 together, because they are kind of like a yin and a yang flip flop kind of situation. I'm fine with that to speed up the process. So any commentary on slides 10 and 11?
And 11 is the question slide.
Slide 11 is option B. A is 10. Oh, 11 is really 13 because that's the way we're rolling today. But if you roll backwards, you'll see that if you go from the beginning to the end, option A is 10 and option B is 11. And then we get 12, and then we get 11 again. It's somebody's favorite number. So, but we're going to go with 10 and 11A. We're going to call it 10 and the first 11. So option A and option B. Any questions on option A or option B? These, this is really the heart of the matter, what, what, what we have to make the decision on tonight. So who's got a comment, question, thoughts that we haven't expressed? Board Member Creji.
Just to go back to numbers, what's, do we, could we estimate for the number of people? I think it's 209 on tonight's list, what the, what the biweekly payroll is for those people? Like, are we talking about, you know, a million every two weeks? Or I guess, you know, three quarters of a million dollars every two weeks, something like that?
Is this the 1.4 that's on the slide? So and we do?
So you have that. Thank you.
Yeah, second bullet down says 1.4 per month. So that's, that must be sort of a rounded figure because we're a two week, two payrolls. So.
That sounds about right. Thanks.
I actually don't know this and slightly embarrassed. The things you learn, do we pay on a two week or a bi-monthly process? Two weeks. So it's actually, if this is two payrolls, it's actually slightly more than that a month because a month is more than two payrolls long. So it's actually 1.4 times 1.25, right? A little bit ish. Okay. A little bit more than 1.4 because that's two payrolls. So that, you know, that's again, a substantial amount of money. And the, the challenge, I think, for everyone is that, this is the, this is the challenge. We love our staff. We know every single one of them is exceptional. We know that. And we know our kids need them. So would the kids benefit from having those staff in place for those two weeks? Absolutely. There's no doubt about it. The problem becomes, what do we do at the end of the day? And that is the big, the big challenge for all of us because $1.4 million a month is a significant expenditure. I think Board Member Elmenyawi, you had asked a question about like how fast we can pivot, and then you were going to lead to another question that I think was going to fit in here. Do I recall that correctly? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I might need a second. I've got too many papers in front of me.
I'm going to go with Board Member Creji. Go ahead.
Just one more quick question that might be somewhat about pivoting, which was, speaking from my own personal experience, when I was almost laid off nine years ago now, I know they were able to pivot really quickly in terms of they were waiting on a union vote. And then, like, I came within 24 hours of packing up and getting out, and they were able to continue my employment without a gap. If we were, say, to get something, let's, let's dream big and say, assigned, you know, signed notarized letter from Andrew Cuomo saying you're going to get all your money, could we, and I know that these layoffs were going out, I think as of September 25th, right? So if we were to get a letter from him on September 23rd or something, would it be too late to stop it? I'm wondering how quickly we would be able to move if we got assurances that we had more money than we thought we were going to get.
So I'm going to say there's two parts to that question. There's the HR part and there's the payroll part. So for the payroll part, we would need to know really by September 23rd to stop that action on the 25th. But the HR component is something different, and I would defer to my colleague, Mr. Petron.
Certainly. If we were approved for funding, we would be able to act quickly to reach out to staff and offer them opportunities and see how they fit into our instructional program.
Right. And I think that, that was a really good question. And it really goes to this, the question of what do we do next, which sort of is rolls us into the last slide. And I just want to bring, bring us to that last slide. We can always go back to 10 and 11 if we have more questions. But I think that very question is why the superintendent talked about scheduling a special meeting for next week. And really, what this comes down to, in my opinion, is asking the budget office to stand behind the words that they put in the newspaper, right? We send them a letter and we say, hey, you said in the newspaper, but we are acting on the information we have and the actual evidence we have at this point. And as a result, our staff members' last day of work is September 25th. And if you can give us solid assurances that we will have any indication of the charter school money, it's not the charter school savings by reducing the charter school expenditure or increased revenue over what we have built into our budget, we will act accordingly. And I think it's, we've talked about this, but I just want to say it again. When we came up with the reductions of 222.1, that was about 16 point. When we came up with the reductions of 222.1, that was about 16.5 million dollars, 16.5 million dollars of, 16.1 million dollars of savings. If we were to get a 20% reduction just on financial aid, on foundation aid, that's 16.5. If it covers all aids, it's 23.5, I think, right? In order to make that 222.1 work, we had to assume that we were going to get $7 million from some other source. We believed, because Pat and John were here on this screen behind me, telling us that the charter school money was a done deal, and it would be announced, which of course it hasn't been, right? So it's not like we were overly conservative in the way we made that estimate before, right? We were, we made some sort of optimistic assumptions that either they would only do the 20% on the foundation aid, which would give us about the $7 million give, or the charter school money would come through. Or, you know, when I dream happy dreams, I would have dreamed both, right? But we, one of those two things had to happen, or else something else was going to have to give, right? So it's not, this is, this is not, it wasn't the most conservative budget we could have come up with to begin with, which puts us in a more precarious position than we would have been if we had done what I believe Schenectady must have done, looking at their numbers and knowing our size, and knowing that they reduced about 400, I think, right? I'm thinking, they took the worst-case scenario, and I have not been attending their board meetings, all y'all are enough for me, you know, I can't go to both, but I'm guessing that that must be what they had to do, because they reduced twice as many employees as we did, and they're kind of sort of roughly the same size as us. So we didn't make that incredibly conservative assumption and lay off every person we had to, to make the most conservative budget. We had a sort of optimistic, based on our reliance on the state legislatures, legislators, that they had an agreement from the executive branch that this was going to be fixed. But we still have no formal notice that it's been fixed. So to me, that's even more reason why we need to be more conservative now, because we were less conservative when we made that first assumption, which I'm not really sure members of the community really processed all of that, but I think it's a really important point. So, are we ready? Board Member Elmenyawi has an eyebrow up.
So I just want to go back to this timeline of postponing to next week, because I know that was mentioned. Now, that is the furthest we can push back before it starts affecting payroll. Is that correct? Next week?
It's a little complicated, because it sounds like payroll would have to know by Wednesday. So if we actually didn't vote until Thursday, we'd have a problem.
So it's a little more complicated than that, because we have to prepare if we're letting people go on September 25th. So if we don't know that until next Wednesday or Thursday, there would not be an opportunity for us to affect that for the 25th. We would really need to know today to do that. If we found very good news, where we received additional revenue, we could stop that much more quickly than we can implement that.
I think I understand. I believe there's also just a, there's just a literal logistical problem too, right? There's, if we were to, if the, we don't have a lag in our payroll, right? If you work on September 25th, you get paid on September 25th. That's how our payroll works right now. So if we were to vote next Thursday to lay people off and send them a letter, they might show up at work on Monday, because the mail, we know Albany's mail takes five days, right? It's like, can take quite a bit. So how would that really work? Like, we need to give people time to know if they've been reduced. That is, again, the sort of nice thing about the possibility of rescinding, which I know doesn't give our staff certainty, and I know they desperately need certainty, but we need certainty from the Department of Budget before we can act. So if we were to vote to do Option A, which is do, you know, rescind the positions now, holding the possibility of a special meeting, which we would only have in, as Board Member Creji calls it, you know, unlikely, I think is the word she used, scenario under which we get a, you know, notarized letter from the governor saying, "Yes, we'll give you your money," we could vote to rescind on the 24th. And then as Deputy Superintendent Roaring says, she can stop the presses and figure out how to do something different. No, she says no. We'd need to vote before that to stop the presses?
23rd.
On the 23rd, okay. Well, that's good. So the special meeting would have to be, if we were to have an evening meeting on the 23rd, does that give you time? Or does it have to be like a daytime meeting on the 23rd, or a date on the 22nd?
I have a wonderful payroll office, and I know we would make a miracle happen.
Okay, so we're going to say the 23rd. Now, again, I just, I don't want anybody to be artificially optimistic, right? You know, we're, today's Thursday. We're going to send a letter to the Department of Budget, and they may have a few other things going on right now besides us. So the idea that we would get certainty by the 23rd is not, is not very likely, right? However, I think the important part about Option A is that if we get that certainty October 1st, October 10th, November 10th, we can always recall people, right? We couldn't stop the layoffs by then, because they would have happened, but we can recall people. I hate that part, because I know our best and brightest are going to, first of all, feel that their, you know, their relationship with us has been severed and feel much more, you know, disappointed and angry and interested in finding other employment. And I understand that, and that is a perfectly human and reasonable thing to do. But we can recall people, no matter when we find any kind of financial certainty. Other thoughts about the recommendation as proposed by the superintendent? Or anything on Slides 10 through 12? Well, 10 through 11?
Go ahead. I personally still feel, and I, it makes me crazy, but I still would go with the superintendent's recommendation, just because it, it feels to me that's our best thinking and our best planning. I'll tell you, the other thing that bothers me a lot too, and it goes to your point, you know, we stayed around the 16 million, 20% on, you know, just on foundation aid, and it could get worse. And also, I don't, I don't think, I understand Pat and John are really working hard on our behalf. I just don't have the confidence that there'll be action on the charter school monies anytime, anytime soon. So, and, so anyway, as reluctant as I am, I really think we have to make a decision, and I support the recommendation on A, because I feel it, while it still has a lot of uncertainty around it, it also does provide some certainty. At least you know, as an employee, that you're, you know, that your life is going to change and has been changed. Not that, oh, maybe another week or another two days. I can't think of anything more disruptive than to be trying to teach and sit there and think, well, it's not today, but it could be tomorrow, could be next week. So, again, as hard, hard as this is, and I just want to say, I remember, Ms. Creji, I was in a similar situation, one with Daddy Cuomo and one with Bataki, where we're going through those exact same layoff things. In fact, you know, I had colleagues who I was working with here, who did manage to get some district positions, and it was a really rough going. Never ever want to have anybody go through that. But I can tell you that almost for a solid year, it felt like I don't know what's going to happen. And I almost would rather have somebody just make me this decision, because my mind is just going crazy, and I can't live or plan very well that way. So that is my suggestion, is that we follow suit with the superintendent's recommendation. And I do think, and again, I don't know whether, I also like the other strategies that you have here around, you know, communicating with DOB. That's very urgent, of course. I think that we do have a community that does support or wants to rally behind us, and, or at least to say to the state, "You've got to fix several things." And I think we ought to lay out what those things are, some of which, you know, I had mentioned, Dr. Shatur mentioned. So I think we've got to try to figure out how to do that. And there are groups that are doing that. I think they just need to galvanize a bit more. And so, and I'm all set for having a meeting, if necessary, next week to make a different decision. So that's where I stand.
I'm going to say, Board Member Man, then Dr. Chatur, is that okay?
So I would like to say that I, as, none of these feel like good options, but they're the best options that we have. You know, I do support the recommendations that have been made that are on Slide 12. That being said, and I want to say this, I want to be really clear about this, I'm really concerned about losing or not being able to engage those kids that we've been serving, whether it's through TCC, through TCC and AIC. I'm really concerned about them. So my plea is, if there's any opportunity to bring individuals back or to bring positions back, if we could focus on those individuals or those positions that know how to engage those young men and women that are served through those programs. And, and that's, that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Dr. Chatur?
I understand the position, the status, and too, that, you know, they don't have the money. They're the ones that are making the big bucks to make those decisions. And I expect that they would, they would. You know, education is, should be a priority. Just because we don't manufacture chips and do those things, you decide you want to bail them out, you don't want to bail out public education. But schools, public schools are tied to so many things. They're an integral part of the community. People move into towns because of the schools. It raises the value of the area. It gives, you know, kids with a good education. It builds community. There's a lot more than just dollars and cents. And if you don't see it, I mean, I don't know what to say. Given their track record, I'm not hopeful that by 23rd, we'll have a stamped notarized letter. It has to be notarized, because otherwise I won't trust it. That, yes, you have all the money you want. I'm very, so I'm not hopeful about that. It'd be great if that happens. And, you know, so as Wiki said, I mean, I totally agree. It's sort of like a stitch in time saves nine. Doing this allows us to keep the programming going, as hard as it is to let people go. The option of letting more people go later on is even more harder. And hopefully, someone's listening. Someone's knocking on someone's door saying, "Hey, can you change that executive order?" Because you're not making it easy for any of us. No one needs to be let go. Every person is needed. And we will pivot. We will, you know, you want to have a meeting at 11:00 PM on the 23rd? That's fine by me. We will all be here. We will pivot. But that needs to happen. That action needs to happen from, you know...
I see Board Member Elmenyawi, and Board Member Creji, then Board Member Wilson, and hopefully I'll remember that.
I'm really concerned about next year. That's, I know it seems so far away at this point, but if this is what they're handing to us this year, I, and I understand both options. I also am leaning towards Option A, obviously, but I'm concerned about what it means in terms of the game, the political game. So we, we kind of crack under pressure, and these cuts just carry on through next year. And then what happens? And are we going to still be in the same position where we can't bring our kids into school, our 7 through 12 graders to school? It's just, it's such a, it's such a really unfair position that they're putting us in. And I really don't like the idea that we accept this and move on to next year under these same terms, because it's not going to work. It's an unsustainable solution. And as Dr. Chatur said, regarding the bailing out, it's really sadens me, because the bailing out of our children, everyone's kicking the can back and forth right now. And it's like, oh, no, you can bail them out. No, we're waiting for the federal government. Oh, the state's got to do it. Oh, well, you should have planned better for your budget. Oh, it's premature. Everybody's kicking the can down the road, but this is our kid, these are our children.
I'm just going to interject one small thing, and then I know it's you, Ellen, is, which is, part of what's driving the virtual education, and I believe you know this, Board Member Elmenyawi, it's just something I have to keep reminding myself, is the nature of social distancing in COVID, right? If that is no longer a requirement, right? If something changes so that we are not required to have these unusually small class sizes in the building, let's just pretend there's a perfect vaccine, and everybody who's supposed to take it takes it, and life goes back to semi-normal sometime in the next 12 months, then the budget is no longer so limiting, because part of our issue is that our class sizes have to be unusually small. The normal thing one does when one has a reduction in, in money is one increases class sizes. And that's our problem, is that we can't increase class sizes in the building, because there's no more room in the building, as evidenced by the need for six degrees of, six feet separation here.
I hope that's the case, that we're, it's safe enough to add more than 12 students per class, but I'm not, I'm not holding my breath.
I hear you. Board Member Creji?
Thank you. And before I say what I was going to say, I'll say, it's depressing enough to think that, because I too had said something about, boy, I hope we're not doing virtual again next year, and you reminded me that someday the pandemic will be over. It's depressing, though, to think about 2022, the pandemic is over, but then we have, now we have 30 kids in elementary school classes, because we have no money still. That's still really a hard pill to swallow. This is difficult. And when we talk about today's Option A and Option B, though, I think back to a couple weeks ago, when we talked about how, right now, we're going virtual for grade 7 through 12, but our two fallback options, if the situation gets worse, are either moving to virtual for 6th grade, or moving to virtual for 4th, 5th, and 6th grade, and knowing that we might have to do that at the end of January. I don't like the idea of making these cuts that we have in front of us tonight. They're difficult. They are impacting people that work directly with our kids and people that make a difference in the lives of our most vulnerable students. And I understand that there's an urge among some in the community for us to wait and see what happens, to trust in those words from the governor's office, that this funding will not be withheld or taken away. But I want to do everything that's in our power to make sure that we're not sending nine- and 10-year-olds home in February to kind of educate themselves with a Chromebook. That's just not tenable at all. And if we can avoid that possibility by making these cuts now, with the knowledge that we can come back next week and rescind them if we have to, I think we have to make these difficult cuts now in order to keep what we've got, which is, we have the education for our youngest students taking place in the building, for the families that have elected that, and we have the education for our special needs students taking place in the building. So we've got to preserve that at all costs, because we can't let, we can't let it get away from us, unfortunately. We've got to move, we've got to move now and continue with our plans. I'm glad that we, I'm glad that we have, sometimes it seems more painful to be doing this in increments. You know, we did cuts in the spring, we're doing cuts now, we might be doing more cuts later. But I think it is smarter for us to be doing it like this than to do what another district would do and cut all 400 or 500 people at a stretch. I think we're being cautious, doing what we need to do to preserve our resources and keep as much education going for the kids as we do. So I'm going to reluctantly go, go ahead with these, I would be, I would, I reluctantly would agree to go ahead with the superintendent's plan now and make these cuts.
Ms. Wilson, I think you had a comment, and then I think we're ready to call the question.
Yes, I'm sorry. I just wanted to close out this sort of line of thinking that, as a community... that as a community, as a state, as a society, we do have a lot going on. And this is, I think people said devastating, and that's the only word I could think of. It is devastating. And it's really not part of what our vision, you know, really is, to be honest. And more importantly, I think, really, just trying to understand, how can we sort of look towards the future and knowing that our students are that future and, you know, proceed in this direction? And trying to understand also, you know, we live in this community. So many of the, you know, our school community is our neighbors. They are our friends. And this is not something that we're doing lightly. This is very devastating in that regard. And really, where we are is, I think, I wanted to touch on what Dan Maris said earlier. This is the best option. It's not so much that it's even the best option. It's just what we have in front of us because of the options that have been laid out in front of us. And this is the only way forward at this moment unless we get some late night, last-minute sort of change at a very, like, final hour in some regard. And even then, to Dr. Chitaur's point, it has to be something that we can plan for and account for, and it can't just be a statement. It has to be something really concrete. And that's where I wanted to leave that.
Thank you very much. And I really think that's, that is the part that's the hardest, right? It's just thinking about the implications for the people that we know, the people we think incredibly highly of, and their exceptional skills they have brought to bear on the children in this district. And there is no, there is nothing about them. It has nothing to do with their capacities. It has nothing to do with their commitment. It has nothing to do with their energy and their vitality that they've brought to our kids. And so that makes it incredibly, incredibly hard. And we know our kids need them. So with that said, I think we're all at a point where we hate both options. We hate all of the options. But unfortunately, somebody's got to be the grown-up in the room, and somebody's got to make a bad choice, a choice among the bad choices. And that is us. And that is why we are elected, is to make the best decision we can in the interest of our school district and in the interest of our co-terminist city. Because ultimately, we need to know that we have made the best decision that we can. So I'm going to entertain a motion. And the motion is going to be to adopt the two resolutions that are included on Item F3. There is a resolution to abolish positions and additional resolutions to terminate the employees who are the least senior in those positions. And then there's a separate document with an administrative resolution as well, which was a unique situation that needed a separate resolution. So I'm going to do it all as one because it's all really a package deal. So I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt these resolutions identified on the agenda. Motion by Board Member Wilson, seconded by Board Member Kritchev. All in favor. That is unanimous and possibly the hardest board decision that any of us will ever make. So thank you all very much for your intentionality and your thoughtfulness about how this will impact our students and our district. Board Member Mann, go ahead.
So I've never done this before, but can I, I'm not sure of the process. Actually, I'm looking at you, so let me withhold my comments.
I think I know reading your mind.
Yes, I think you are.
I think I can read your mind. I know after I'm board president for a long time, you get to the reading of the mind. Superintendent Adams, did you have a commentary before we move on?
I'm just wanting to ask if there would be any consideration by the board to postpone the presentations that are left.
We are all reading minds.
As it is 10:14.
Yes, we would all like that. The only thing I wanted to ask you is the safety plan. As I recall, the safety plan has a 30-day sitting period. So I'm not sure if we can postpone that one. The other two, I believe, are discussion purely for discussion's sake. But the safety plan, there's nodding happening in the room. So I believe that we would need to do that conversation tonight. But that's usually fairly short because much of that is really privileged anyway. So.
That is correct. We do have to do the safety plan. But the other two presentations.
So this is how the process works. Someday, when you're board president, Board Member Mann, you'll need to know this. We need to have a vote of five. That is what our policy says, that when we change the agenda after the meeting has begun, it requires a vote of five, not just four. So I'm going to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to remove Items G and H, to be rescheduled by the Agenda Setting Committee. So moved by Board Member Mann, seconded by Board Member Kritchev. All in favor of making our meeting shorter. That is unanimous. And hello, welcome. Let us talk about safety plans.
So Madam President, members of the board, I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to meet Mr. Thompson. He is our new Director of Safety and Security. So welcome to the board meeting. And thank you so very much for your presentation. We will let you get started.
Thank you, Superintendent, Cabinet members, President Savage, board members. Tonight, I will be brief, fortunately for you, for the length of the meeting. We will cover the school safety plan and the district emergency response plan and its updates. We will talk, I will talk briefly about our community partners, our state education department requirements, the areas we'll focus on for this year, and any questions at the end. Our community partners certainly work with the fire department, Albany County Sheriff and state police on a regular basis with regard to the plan and safety measures. But probably our most frequent visitor to the school district is the Albany Police Department, where we have a very strong relationship. We've had the fortunate circumstance to have a strong relationship for a long time, and we continue that. Sadly, because of the budget cuts, not quite yet. Because of the budget cuts, we are down one school resource officer, back to only three within the schools. Fortunately, however, those officers, Chris English, Nicole Reddicks, and George Bryce, do a fantastic job. They are an excellent representation of the Albany Police Department and the community building and the partnerships we work with within the schools, not just with the students, but with the staff as well. They are a small part of the larger prevention services unit within the police department, which is its own unique subunit that does great work to build partnerships and strengthen the relationships within our community. Part of the Education Department requirements outline the district-wide school safety team, the district-wide emergency response team, and the district-wide post-incident response team. As part of that, we work with the building-level emergency planning team, response team, behavioral threat assessment teams, and post-insider response teams. The district-wide school safety team drives the district-wide school safety plan, the district emergency response plan, which is what we are here tonight for in particular. I will tell you that there are no substantial changes to it this year. Really, we just cleaned up a few typos, and it looks largely as it did last year. We did not make any changes to it based on the COVID-19 situation as that is covered by our emergency plan for that. We are represented on the New York State Education Department School Safety Task Force by our very own Dr. Kanzoni Ball. She does a fantastic job with them, and she has certainly the best interest of the district and our students in mind at every moment. Emergency response training this year has taken a slightly different look. We did not do much of it in person, as we were not allowed to gather. We did it online and through a number of recordings. That was presented to building administrators, district administrators through our Admin Week and Professional Development Days. That included the district-wide emergency response plan and emphasis on reconvening their building-level emergency response teams to update their plans. And again, partnering with the Albany Police Department to make sure that they had the best possible response within their school areas. We do still conduct, we will still be conducting lockdown drills. Unfortunately, they will look a little different this year because of the nature of the situation. We don't want to get too far away from what we have done because we have trained successfully in a very effective manner. And it needs to remain the same as much as possible so that we do respond to the best of our abilities in those circumstances. However, we do work, again, with the police department to make sure that we have the best possible response should we have a worst-case scenario in one of our buildings and need to go into lockdown. We do continue to train on incident command. That is something I would like to stress for everybody to brush up on, perhaps, district-wide, building-wide, everybody. That is something that can really strengthen our posture within responding to any situation. Certainly, the COVID-19 crisis is an opportunity for that, to identify areas of strengths and weaknesses that we need to address. One of the great things about the incident command system is it puts everybody on the same page. We use a common terminology and eliminate unnecessary duplication of efforts where we can certainly streamline and make it a far more efficient system and work in conjunction with the police and fire departments when an emergency does happen, sadly. Parent universities this year will be focused on the COVID-19 trauma. And unfortunately, that will lead probably to a larger discussion of the significant trauma that has taken place with many of our students and school community as we can't avoid the headlines of the violence within the city. Sadly, our students do fall on both sides of the violence, both as victims and perpetrators. Unfortunately, that is the reality. And so this is an opportunity to continue that conversation with our staff, with our families, with our community, to make sure that we can serve our children in the best possible fashion. And with that, I will try and keep your meeting brief. I'll open it up to your questions.
Thank you very much, and welcome to your first official board meeting. We're happy to have you presenting to us tonight.
Thank you.
Board colleagues, I encourage you to ask questions. I do remind you that, just like personnel issues, issues of district safety can be things that we need to discuss in an executive session. So you should keep your questions fairly general and topical. Anything that's specific, like, you wouldn't want to ask a question like, hey, if I wanted to get into such and such a building, is there any weakness in that building? That would be a not-good question.
And I won't answer it anyway.
Right. Well, if you have that question, we will go into an executive session, and you can certainly ask that question. But we're not going to ask those kinds of questions here. So, board colleagues, who has a question? Dr. Chitaur?
I wonder, my question is going to be about the lockdown drills. Now that, you know, our seven through 12 kids are all virtual, I can be hopeful that someday soon, we have the money, COVID's gone, and these kids are still going to come back this year, this academic year. Are we doing drills with them too in terms of just getting them prepped so that when they do come into the building, we can do an actual drill?
There will be discussions with the staff as far as how we will conduct those drills when they do return. As far as maintaining that conversation, it is part of our goal to continue the conversation, to make everybody aware that they really should be empowered to make the best decision for themselves in any circumstance to solve the problem that's in front of them and not rely on somebody else to try and solve the problem for them.
I'm sorry.
Can I add to that?
Yes, please, Ms. McKenna, go ahead.
So we are still required to provide the, a certain number of drills during even the COVID-19 school year. And so our principals have been planning for modified drills as they begin to welcome students back to school. So we will be holding our fire drills, our lockdown drills, our shelter-in-place, et cetera. And they will be starting that next week as we begin to slowly return our students to onsite learning.
Board Member Wilson, I think you were next.
Mainly that. In the past, I know that we've been complimented and community members have often said that our emergency response, they were always taken aback that students often knew the difference in how to behave. But I have heard people also state that they wanted to better understand the difference between shelter-in-place and hold-in-place. And I don't know if you've given any thought to possibly make, like, the others are just, and maybe this is just semantics, so forgive me. But like, the others are just one word. So perhaps that could be something that could distinguish the two of them, between the two activities, shelter and hold. And that was just a thought that crossed my mind.
Certainly. If I may, just very briefly, shelter would be for an outside emergency, perhaps. A tornado or one of those freak storms that turns to ice very quick, where we need to just keep everybody in the building to protect them. Hold-in-place would be most likely for something going on within the building. Perhaps an EMS call somewhere in the building for a student or a staff member, who it might be. And we just simply want to keep the halls empty to allow EMS to access, that we would just hold everybody in their classrooms. Perhaps it was happening during a class transition time, and we just wanted to maintain the halls clear to allow emergency services throughout the building unimpeded and maintain the privacy of those in need. Does that clear it up a little for you?
Oh, yeah. For me, I understand. I was just thinking that it was a public discrepancy that they didn't understand there was a difference when they heard the school has gone into hold-in-place versus the school has gone into shelter-in-place. So I didn't know if, like, having two distinctive names would help in that regard or, and perhaps maybe it wouldn't, but that was just a thought that crossed my mind.
Thank you.
Are those standard names that are used sort of nationwide, statewide? Or are they unique to us?
This comes from the Standard Response Protocol put forth by the I Love You Guys Foundation, which is something we have adopted and worked very closely with. And quite a number of law enforcement agencies do use this nationwide, yes.
That's too bad because I do agree with Board Member Wilson that it is, the terms are very confusing to those who do not spend a lot of time with them. But, you know, it would be very confusing to the folks who need to know them to have us randomly changed to something different. Board members.
Feel free to attend any of our training, and we can certainly go into more depth.
Oh, thank you.
Well, I guess that was my question, too, is, I mean, well, not my question, but my comment is, I know that when I've talked to my daughter and her friends, they go, and I say, well, what's this? And they're like, oh, my God. And they explain to me, like, and I think it's really important that they understand it, right? And they seem to very well. It's just like a whole nother, like, a language that they get. And I've just not had that kind of training personally, so I'm sort of clueless. I don't, I don't get that kind of stuff on my job either. They just tell you, get out of here or go home, you know? But I don't get these different variations of drills and stuff like that. But as long as the kids, from my point of view, understand what it is they have to do, then I am pretty fine with it. And it is sort of standardized.
Yeah, although the issue is the parents. Parents, parents don't always understand it, and it leads to a level of community distress when they hear that there's a hold-in-place. And then people think that means it's a lockout, yeah. Yeah.
President Savage, we do have a parent brochure that we would absolutely be happy to provide to our parents again.
Great. Seems like a good first day of school, opening week kind of thing to share. Board Member Kritchev.
I just had a quick question about the current environment. And it's, I know a lot of people have talked about the importance of ventilation, open windows, open doors, and whatnot. And I wondered, have we, do we have any official policy on open windows and doors as it relates to safety, you know, like, security versus ventilation?
I strongly discourage it. Open doors and windows are a hazard, plain and simple. However, for ventilation, we can address that through the HVAC systems within the buildings.
Okay, so do we have an official? Because I know I was packing lunch, packing bags at Pine Hills, and I saw a sign on the window that said, it's forbidden to open this window. Is that accurate, that most buildings, that people are prohibited from opening windows? Or just first-floor windows?
Member, excuse me, Member Kritchev, are you speaking about the rescue windows?
I don't know if they were rescue windows. I just saw a window in the cafeteria that said, you're not allowed to open the window. Maybe it was a rescue window, I don't.
Board Member Mann, could you use a microphone?
I'm not even sure. If it were, if it were a rescue window, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have said that. So it was probably a reminder to the students not to open a regular window.
I think there's a broader question here that maybe is really a question for Deputy Superintendent Roaring or the Superintendent Adams about windows and HVAC and ventilation and what the expectations are for instructional staff if they are in a building that has windows that do open in this time of COVID when things on balance might be different.
So this is COVID-related in terms of opening windows, et cetera, correct?
But I know that the safety, the safety plan talks about, you know, like, whether things should be locked or open or whatever. So that's kind of what I'm asking, is that, I know, I'm sure that the plan itself hasn't been updated for COVID. So I'm just wondering if our policies have changed regarding that?
The district emergency response plan has not changed. There is a special COVID addendum that we work under to adapt to all our current circumstances. But I don't want to lose focus that we face other hazards besides the COVID-19 crisis. While that has certainly drawn all the headlines and certainly these meetings for the budget crisis, we do still face other significant problems that are ever-present within our community, as many others. And we can't ignore those or put those safety measures aside.
Of course. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question or a comment? Otherwise, this will come back for discussion, not next meeting, but the following meeting because we need to do the 30 days availability for public comment. So we, as with everything, welcome public comment on the district safety plan. Anybody have any other commentary? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm sorry to- I'm sorry to keep you so late. Normally, when we have special guests, we try and put them early on the agenda, but under the circumstances, that did not seem advisable, since we had to deal with the budget issue very thoroughly.
But, you know, you're the last person here, so congrats.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, so we do have on the agenda board committee reports. Are there any committee reports? I don't think any committees have met since last time. No?
No, just.
Oh, the Government Affairs Committee, Matt. We did meet, and we talked through and developed a set of talking points for our, you know, the things that we've talked about tonight, in terms of equity in the reductions, and then we also talked about how we would do, begin again, our fall round of talking to our legislators about what we need, which will be particularly interesting this year. And the one thing that might be a little bit different this year is that last year, at this time, we had not yet committed to the big five, and now we have, so we'll be able to coordinate a little better with them, and make sure that we are really thoughtful about the way we use our resources there. We will be coming forward over the next couple of weeks with a revised legislative ask for you guys to provide any feedback on, back to the committee. I think that's it. Did I miss anything, committee members? I think that's the, the, the. Board Member Smith?
Yeah, I just, just wanted to let the public know that the Facilities Committee will meet on the 22nd. It will be a virtual meeting, but please feel free to join us, 5:30 on the 22nd. Thank you.
Anyone else? Board Member Wilson?
I don't know if this belongs here or in another space in the meeting, but I do want to reiterate that many people, and I think it goes with government relations, many people have asked how to advocate on our behalf, and I just don't know if we could summarize that for them briefly, if you're still listening.
Actually, I was wondering, Mr. Lesko, have you made any progress on that conversation about energizing our community around some advocacy efforts? Do you have anything to report yet? Okay, because that was a topic at Government Affairs, both to identify what we could do, right? And we all, I think, as individuals, have some sense of what to do, but also making sure that we are very clear about what the district's appropriate role is. And so I know that Ram was going to just coordinate that, to make sure that we knew which, what any requirements are.
Well, before, I don't know, Vicky, I'm going to, sorry to cut you off. I was just going to say that a friend of mine who works, for lack of a better term, in lobbying, per se, always urged us that, I did see, like, draft letters circulating from people who did it in the community, and emails, but they always urge people to simply call the office to, and to sit, because they kind of pay attention to how much the public outpouring is on the issue.
Yeah, absolutely. Board Member Smith?
Right. Again, and I don't know how much of this is for us to initiate, but I do know that the NAACP is, has been taking some action, and there are other groups and individuals who are trying to do the same as well. Again, I don't know what's appropriate, but sort of touching base with them to say, hey, what's happening, and/or vice versa, they may also reach out to us. I also wanted to just point out that the one letter, maybe it was one letter, but from Bernie Mulligan, Mark Michler, Anita Thayer, so, you know, they are some of the people that I know have that ability to, you know, galvanize folks in the community, and so, you know, someone could follow up there with them.
Yes. So I would say I remind all of my board colleagues that you did not release your First Amendment rights when you became a schoolroom member, so you are free to advocate in whatever way seems the most effective to you as an individual citizen, in terms of what we will do as a district, and what our posture will be, and what our tactics will be. I know that Mr. Lesko took that as a takeaway from our Government Affairs meeting, which was only Monday morning at 8:00 AM, which seems like at least a month ago, but in fact was really only a few days ago. So I know that he's working on that, and will be, we certainly will continue to do letters to our legislators, phone calls to our legislators on behalf of the district, which we do frequently. I know the superintendent and I are regularly in contact with our state legislators that represent us. Other efforts, we will need to, you know, just be really thoughtful about the fact that we do those properly. Anything else? Any other committee reports? Any other items of other business for the good of the order? May I have a motion to adjourn? Board Member Wilson, seconded by Board Member Smith, all in favor. That is unanimous. We are adjourned. We will see you potentially next week, September 23rd on Wednesday, as a potential special meeting, if we have any action to take that night, otherwise, October 1st.